Good evening. Today is the 17th of October 2016. We're meeting here at the district offices. This is the meeting of the Board of Education. I called the meeting together at 5:34. May I have a motion to enter Executive Session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment of particular person or persons and collective bargaining negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're now in Executive Session. May I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We're back in open session. At this time, we'll have the Fledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, there are no agenda modifications, right? Which number is that? Is there one for stipulations, right? Well, I'm a little confused, I guess. There's nothing. The agenda's okay where it is, or we're gonna make a...
We're gonna make a...
Okay. I guess there are... And what would that be? I'm, you know, I'm deaf in this here.
It's all right. You can't hear out the other one either.
Oh, stipulation of settlement. Yeah, but I don't know what number that is, aren't I?
We don't have one.
Oh, we don't have one yet? Okay. All right, there is one modification on a stipulation of settlement that will be brought up near the end of the meeting, I guess. Okay. And I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the stipulation of settlement included.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. You know, I'm old. And that brings us to pride. And we'll give James the first shot. You got any pride for us tonight?
Oh, yeah. There's been quite a lot these past couple of weeks. There's been a lot of success on the sports aspect. And there are also a bunch of activities being put on by student government and by the sports teams for a whole range of students to participate in. And with that, I was able to see a rise in participation from the students. And it's pretty great to see all of them participating. And the rededication that happened on Friday was pretty great. The music, I'd say, was awesome, and the speakers were excellent. And the students that I spoke to who participated in the music, they said that they were very happy to share their talents with the class of 66, and also with you guys.
Great. Yeah, it was a great event. It was a great event. The music was exceptional. And I think it's on YouTube, right? So you can...
Yes.
You can actually... Ms. Roosevelt's address was awesome. It was really good. We got any pride on your side?
Yeah, just a few more. Definitely a shout-out to Dave Peters, who won them Hall of Champs in golf. And we had a swimmer deal on the girls' swim team, who also did exceptionally well. The varsity and junior varsity cheerleaders spearheaded the Pinkout Day and Pinkout Month at FDR. They've been working on it for quite a while. And their goal was to raise $2,000. And they exceeded it. And their Pinkout at FDR raised $6,800. And Varsity TV, you can Google the Varsity TV. They put a really nice article together on the cheerleaders and their Pinkout and some of their accomplishments and activities. Area Allstate, in the music department, we had an extensive list of students who went to Area Allstate. For orchestra, Nicole Boldy, Rachel Nazek, Carolyn Ryan. Band students, Leila Reins... Or Reins, I'm sorry. Sarah Olson, Chiara Giammatteo, Amelia McNamara, Will Moss, Kira Brainard, Cody Homel. In chorus, Thomas Ahmed, Hannah Apuzzo, Rachel Bovee, Sabrina Calhensley, Tommy Camoli, Dylan Davies, Edison Delorio, Kristen Horn, Libby Hughes, Mahalia Isabel, Rihanna Macau, Brendan McGann, Joe Reyes, Carli Ronk, Alexia Sanchez, Brianna Shad, Grace Shannon, Natalie Wajda. How'd I do with those names, James? Okay? I know I've got my... You might need a little sprucing up there. But so congratulations to all those students who made it to Area Allstate. And just again, we had the opportunity to go to the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards, where Kevin Cheon was recognized for board service excellence. We did a little for him here. Donna Oles from Transportation, and Heather Dennis from Pupil Services. So Donna was in the area of administrative support, and Heather in administration. So it was a wonderful evening. That's why we're meeting on a Monday night instead of a Thursday night. We had quite a group there to help them celebrate their awards. And Doug was our resident photographer. And there should be, if they're not up already, we should have some pictures on Facebook and the website by tomorrow.
Yeah, all the principals have their... I sent them all the pictures, though.
Oh, great.
So Donna has hers, and then Heather. Yeah, it was a good night. It was a good night. I got... I've learned a trick from another old dog there then about there's a back way around Newburgh. Who knew? There was. I didn't know. It was nice, right down by the river. It was really cool.
You would think right now all those good restaurants down there on River Road would have put out all sorts of groceries and say, "Why don't you take this trip around Newburgh?" There's excellent restaurants right on the rivers.
So you got anything else with the superintendent's report? Or is that it?
I need to pull up the... Can you? So, just under Superintendent's Report, is it posted? I'm waiting for my screen to pick up. We changed our school lunch charge policy. I'm not sure if it's attached here. Yes. Okay, so we can wait till we get to that, then.
Yeah. Okay. All right, brings us to the presentation of the external auditor. Here on.
Linda, do you want to introduce first with our new auditing firm? It might be nice to...
Sure.
I don't remember Heather's last name.
This is Heather Lewis. She's our new auditor with Marvin &amp; Company. It was our first year with them. I really loved working with them. And I think the report's gonna be really good. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Okay. So Marvin &amp; Company, I'm Heather Lewis, external auditing firm. So we're gonna go through your financial statements. We're basically going to go through the audit reports themselves. So we're gonna start with that large packet that you have in front of you. And if you turn to page one, this is where the audit report starts. So you've engaged us to give a report on your financial statements, including your footnotes. Management is responsible for making sure those financial statements are materially correct. They're also responsible for making sure they have appropriate internal controls in place to make sure the financial statements are materially correct. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on those financial statements. We're also responsible for complying with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. As part of our audit process, we consider your internal controls, and we test some of those controls. We don't give an opinion on it, but we do consider it as part of the audit process. We also evaluate your accounting policies to make sure those seem appropriate. And we also evaluate your estimates to make sure that the estimates are reasonable and materially correct as well. And we believe that everything that we've done has gathered enough evidence for us to give an opinion on your financial statements. And that's what page two does. Up at the top is the opinion. And we believe that your financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's a clean opinion. It's considered an unmodified opinion. So it's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. The Other Matters section, there's also required supplementary information that is required in accordance with governmental accounting standards, which are the standards that you follow. So there's certain schedules that are in here. We don't give an opinion on them, but they are required to be in there. There's also some additional schedules that the State Education Department requires that you have in your financial statements. And that paragraph on supplemental information lets you know that we believe that those statements are materially correct in relation to the statements as a whole. The very last section lets you know that you also have a government auditing standards report that's included in the back that we'll go through. And that it's an important report to consider when you're looking at the district as a whole. So that's the first opinion. And then following that is your management discussion and analysis, which is a nice summarization of what the financial statements say. And it gives the users of the financial statements some information that the district is looking forward and some future things to consider when you're looking at the financial statements. And then if you turn to page B1, this is your statement of net position. So these are the full accrual financial statements. They include all the assets and liabilities, long-term and short-term, of the district. It includes your fixed assets, your capital assets, as well as your long-term liabilities like debt and bonds and things of that nature. One thing I'd like to point out is down at the bottom, you see your unrestricted net position is a deficit of $62 million. That is very normal. You have an other post-employment benefit liability, so the cost that you accrue for your retirees of $87 million. That's recorded as a liability. Other post-employment benefits payable, you're not legally allowed to fund that. You're not able to set aside any money. You're not able to put aside reserves or anything. So that is a liability that shows up on these full accrual financial statements, that you have no way to fund. So that always causes the school district's unrestricted net position to be a negative number. So that's a very normal thing to see. And I feel it's always important to point out. If someone were to look at the statements, it might look like it doesn't seem appropriate, but it's very appropriate and very normal. And then if you turn to page B3, this is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So you chose this year to report each fund as major. And overall, your financials, you know, your numbers look pretty consistent, comparable to last year. I can tell you, your general fund revenue side, you are within 1% of budget, which is, you know, spot-on revenue budgeting. Your expenditures, you're about 6.5% under budget, which we saw at a lot of districts this year. Expenses were significantly under budget, and revenues were right on. So you're pretty consistent with what we've seen in other districts. And then we're gonna flip to the back. We're gonna go to the report on internal control. So if you go to page E1... Okay, so this is your... Our report on internal control. So as part of the audit process, we have to consider your internal control over financial reporting. We develop our consideration through discussions that we have with management and various testing that we do throughout the audit process. We have some definitions of what a deficiency in internal control would be, what a material weakness is. The very last paragraph says that, basically, based on the work that we've done, we did not identify any deficiencies that we believe are material weaknesses. But that limitation is somewhat... You know, we only know what we know. We didn't come across anything during the audit process. One thing that we talked about at the Audit Committee is the recent theft that you had with the athletic director and how that impacted our audit and what we did as part of the audit process. So the district was very proactive in making us aware of the theft that occurred. And as part of our audit response, what we have to do is consider... There's a bunch of different factors. One, is it material to your financial statements? Did that theft cause a material misstatement within your financials? It did not. You know, it's not a... Well, yes, it's a big dollar. It's not material to your financial statements, even if you were to look at it as if it happened just in the '15-'16 school year. The other thing we have to consider is, did the district react appropriately? In this case, the district did. You know, they launched an investigation, got police involved, did everything appropriately. The other thing we have to consider is, did the individuals who were conducting the investigation, did they make the board aware? Obviously, yes. The board was made aware of the situation. And then we have to consider whether or not there was any internal control failure that happened that would cause us to believe that there is a systemic issue and something more that needs to be considered. Based on our discussions and our understanding of the circumstances, you know, it was a theft. There's not... There wasn't really a breakdown in the internal controls or something that seemed to be a systemic issue. All controls seemed to still be in place. It was the end result of that item being misappropriated. And that can happen. But based on our understanding of the facts and circumstances, we didn't believe there was anything that needed to be reported here in the report. But that was a question that came up during the discussion with the Audit Committee. So I wanted to make you aware that we were fully aware of the situation. And it did not impact our audit report or disclosures or anything.
Thank you, Heather. And I just want to add that currently, right now, it is a police investigation and it's alleged theft, technically.
Yes.
Not...
Yes. Right. Okay, so again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control that we found during our audit process. If you turn to page E2, Compliance and Other Matters. So we also have to consider the district's compliance with various laws and regulations as part of the audit process. For school districts, it's whether you're in compliance with budget, whether you're in compliance with various laws that relate to reserves and things of that nature. And we did have three items that we felt were material non-compliance items. They all related to fund balance. So you're over the 4% real property tax law. Your unassigned fund balance is over the 4%. That's a material non-compliance. We have to disclose that in the audit report. And there was also some items related to how an accrual or reserve was calculated in accordance with GASB standards, and then another reserve that was calculated in accordance with state education law. So those are disclosed, but they were all related to fund balance. So that's our report on internal control. If you go two more pages to the Single Audit section, because you receive over $750,000 in federal awards, you're required to have a single audit. It's now done under the Uniform Guidance. It used to be A133. So this first page lets you know that we're responsible for giving a report on compliance with major federal programs. Management is responsible for complying with those in all material respects. And we're responsible for auditing your compliance. Page two gives our opinion. So in our opinion, the district did comply in all material respects with the direct and material compliance requirements of the major federal programs. We also have to consider the district's internal control over compliance. We considered that, didn't have anything to report in that area. We also have the last paragraph, a report on the schedule of federal awards. We believe that that schedule is fairly stated in relation to the statements as a whole. So this is, again, is a clean opinion. You know, an unmodified opinion. And then the last section just gives you some more information on the findings. And it gives you management's response to those findings, which is required to be included in the report. Any questions on those financial statements? The other item that we have for you is... The next item is a letter. It's the required communication with the board members. It says, "Significant audit findings," underlined about halfway down. And this is a pretty standard letter. It lets you know that we consider the accounting policies that the district uses as part of our audit process. We believe that those are appropriate. It also lets you know that there are estimates within the financial statements. You know, school district financial statements have some significant estimates. You use actuaries to calculate your other post-employment benefits. You also use actuaries indirectly through the state for your employees' retirement system and teachers' retirement system pension plans. You have some compensated absences. So there's a lot of estimates within the financial statements. You're just being made aware that estimates can change. But we believe that they are materially appropriate. And then page two is a lot of standard language. You know, we didn't have any difficulties in dealing with management. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. You know, we talked about some adjustments between fund balance numbers, but that's really it. Nothing that had a bottom-line impact on the financial numbers. We did not have any disagreements with management. We didn't... You know, as far as we're aware, there were no consultations with other independent accountants. Management has provided us with representations that they've been truthful and accurate and have provided us with access to everyone that we needed to speak with and all the information that we requested. And we didn't have anything else that we felt needed to go into this letter. So it's pretty standard language. And then the last two items that you have are the audit of the extra classroom activity funds. So your extra classroom activity fund is done on the cash basis of accounting. And we do an audit of that. We test some transactions to see whether or not they are coded to the appropriate club. And we also do some compliance testing to see whether or not the district is in compliance with the requirements of the state. So for audit purposes, you know, we believe your financial statements are materially correct and show, reflect the cash balances of each of the individual clubs based on our testing. So it's, you know, a clean opinion, unmodified opinion as well on the extra classroom activity funds. There's also a management letter with some findings that we had over extra classroom that is mostly... Has to do with compliance with the state guidelines. And we went through those findings in detail with the Audit Committee as well. So any questions on any of this?
James?
Yeah, I was wondering, like, what makes an opinion unmodified?
It makes... It's unmodified if there is nothing that would cause us to believe that we can't audit a certain number. So if we weren't given access to certain financial records, like if someone didn't give us a bank statement or a bank reconciliation for an account, we would have to modify our opinion and say, "Everything is correct except for that item." Or if there isn't just good record. So it's rare in a school district to have to qualify the opinion, but it does happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I'll just leave it here. Okay. That brings us to the Assessment Update. Are you...
Deputy Superintendent? Yes, absolutely. Great. Okay, welcome. Again, this is my first Assessment Update. I'm really happy to be here in my new role. And I wanted to start with saying that this will look a little different, and you may see some differences in the building data reports. As we engage in the work around the four Cs, critical thinking, communication, creativity, and collaboration, we will be gathering and sharing different kinds of data. So the four Cs are all about 21st century skills, which means that we're gonna start really measuring skills, not just content, although we have been measuring both, but not in such an explicit way. So rather than seeing the same data sets presented each of the school visits, I'm gonna share some of that traditional data, especially three through eight. And then you might see some different data sets when you visit the elementary and middle school. So this brief overview will look at MAPS, the Fountains of Pennell reading benchmark assessments, three-through-eight state tests, and regions. And then at your seats, you have more comprehensive information in the full report. I believe we haven't had that assessment report for the last few years, but many of you will recognize it. So we brought it back and brought back most of that information that was in the reports in the past. And specifically, regions, APs, things like that, that are not in this report. Okay. So this is an example. So what I did here was I looked at the MAPS, the NWEA results for Haveland reading. And we looked at growth. So this is over three years. It was the same group of sixth graders, who then became seventh graders and eighth graders. And we compared it to the national reading growth for fall to spring. So what you can see is that we outperformed in terms of growth at Haveland in reading. You can also see that at the statewide level, as the tests got more challenging, nationally, students performed less well. But at Haveland, we maintained our growth. And this is Haveland math. And although we didn't grow as much, you can see that we're still outperforming national growth. And again, the test is harder every year. So this is cohort data. Okay. Now, this is FDR reading growth. And here, we just have grades nine and 10, where we're doing MAPS. Oh, I'm sorry, this is fall to spring 2016 compared to national growth. So I need to go back. Sorry. So I'm showing cohort data. Later, this is actually all of Haveland's MAPS. So this is all 2016. So my apologies. Same with math. Okay, so FDR, again, we see higher than the national reading growth in grades nine and 10.
Could I just interrupt for a second? How do we evaluate this? If, on a national level, they're all at 90%, and so they only went up 1.8%, and we were at 60% and went up 10%, how does that chart help us?
Yeah, and MAPS looks at growth. So we look at different data to see how we perform compared to state and national. So, yeah, this is looking at how well we did in improving students' reading. So we outperformed in terms of improvement. And that's what MAPS does, is it shows you from fall to spring. It'll show growth. So in this particular measure...
But relative to what? If ours went up 5% relative to what we were at, maybe, say, 75%, and the national average was already at 90%, and it only went up .08, then this chart doesn't tell me anything about how well we're doing.
So I would have to... I could bring back other data or show you other data to show how we do in terms of... MAPS will show you about what your RIT score is, about what grade you're performing. If you're a 10th grader, are you reading at a 10th grade reading level? So I could bring some of that as well. But generally, what they seek to measure is growth. Projected growth upon actualized growth.
I understand, and I'm glad to see it is growing. But I don't personally get a lot out of that graph.
Okay. And I think I'd already done the math, a similar pattern. And I will get that for you. Okay. I show this in another form, but I wanted to show just on one slide. This is three-through-eight ELA over the past three years. And I'll let you look at it for a minute. It's separated out for general and special education. And overall, you can see in general, we've improved or stayed the same with very low results for students with disabilities. And the data by building is in your assessment report. So you can see by building for both ELA and math. And we're gonna go into a little more here. This is the math. Similar pattern. Okay. So this is overall. So this is district-wide students passing levels three and four in each of the grade levels over the past three years. And what I added that we haven't traditionally had in this report is the percentage of statewide passing. So Doug, to answer your question, here's a place where I really wanted to have some perspective. So we're... How are we doing? And we hear a lot about the statewide test changing and the benchmarks changing, and many districts not performing well. But you can see that we're... We are below the... many districts not performing well, but you can see that we're, we are below the state average in ELA. So although you can't claim that 34.3% in sixth grade is a wonderful score, we're at 24%. So the range is we are below the state average by as little as 6.5% or as much as 14.8% depending on the grade level.
Aviva, is there any, anything to be attributed to the 2015 numbers? I noticed consistently, but for one class grade, every one of them dropped. If you look at it, it went from 25 to 24 to third grade, 26 to 24 to fourth grade.
Well, the blue on the left is 2014, so you can see it drops in most cases in 2015, and 2016 looks like we actually improved a bit at every grade level, but again, not, not close to the statewide average.
But is there any significance, or is there any comments or things made about the testing that was done in 2015 being inappropriate, or is it
Well, it changed so much in that the time was extended for all students, the exams were shortened, and we have really significant opt-out rates. So, you know, when we have to look at a root cause, certainly the pattern across the state is that many students opting out are students who traditionally would have passed the exam, and we can only guess, but we have really high opt-out rates. So to say that these tests by themselves are really significant, we're not measuring all our students, not, not close.
Now, the opt-outs started in what year? Was it 2015 or 14?
14, but they grew significantly in 15. Okay. And this is three through eight, general education students only for the three years. So you can see that it's higher, but if you go back here, you know, in some cases, it's higher than the overall average for the state, but not significantly and not all cases even reaching that. Okay, and here's special education. So you can see the largest growth over the three-year period goes from zero to 9%. It looks like it's really great, but that's 9% passing. And the largest decrease in passing rate was five, going from 5% to 0%, but it's all very low pass rates. And in a minute, I'll show you the statewide students with disabilities results. They only give those, I'll show you the format. Although they're low, they include in them students getting a level two, and we traditionally haven't. I mean, it's not considered passing, so we wanted to compare really getting a level three or getting a level four and passing. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. And when you showed us that first chart, which is the percentages and things with the numbers, I saw with the special ed, they were here, yes, exactly. Did we stop having our special ed students take the assessments? Or why are there so many zeros, I guess?
Nobody passed.
Oh, okay.
That's what that is. Yeah, they all take it.
All right.
Yeah, we have a few
Except for the ones that opt out.
Except for opting out. And then we do have students who are alternately assessed, so very few students with disabilities actually are determined to need to take an alternative assessment and have alternative curriculum. And for those students, it is always counted against us in the data in that they, their counted is not tested, but it's such a small number that that doesn't. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so this is the chart from the state. And it's just a little perspective on the students with disabilities statewide. So we only show you levels three and four, so we compare that. And in 2016, we ranged between 0 and 9%, as I said, depending on the grade level in terms of passing rate. Statewide average was 7.9% passing in 2016. So 7.9% students with disabilities passed three through eight, and we had between 0 and 9% depending on grade level. And again, they combined all of theirs. Okay. So here's passing rates for math, again, compared for 2016 only to statewide results. So these are statewide results for 2016, and the range here is between 11 and 17% below the state average, depending on the grade level. So again, not tremendously high at the statewide level, but we are significantly lower. Okay, and then we're going to do the same thing with general education. This is three years of just general education, math, three through eight, for the different grade levels. And here's special education.
So Aviva, can we go back? Just, why do we think that eighth grade seems to drop so significantly in general?
You know, I couldn't begin to hazard a guess standing here. You know, I mean, that's something we need to look at. We have really significant dropout rates for math at Haveland for the statewide test, so I feel like it's, it's hard to say whether it's just the students that were tested and not that many. But again, we are comparing years of opt-out to opt-out as well.
Aviva?
Yeah.
Given the opt-out rates that we've seen over the last two years, how much credibility can we give these numbers?
You know, I would say not a lot, which is why I really want the buildings to be able to share other kind of data with you. And when we get to Fountas and Pennell, you can see that this is, you know, a very widely accepted benchmark assessment and how many more of our students are reading on benchmark than the statewide tests would, would tell us. And at the same time, you know, these are in the school report card, they're in the newspaper, and, and I think it's important for us to discuss them here and to give them it, yeah, some attention.
If, yeah, and absolutely. And if I can add, the, the thing that becomes difficult with the test refusal opt-out movement is we can't use it for a benchmark to look at our curriculum because we don't get a good read on how our students are actually doing as, as a grade level. We can look individually. But if you look in the assessment booklet, our regions, our English regions examination, which is the benchmark for getting out of high school, the one test in English Language Arts that you have to pass to graduate from high school, our pass rate for the last cohort was 90.
For gen ed, 94, in the 80s for all students.
And in the 80s. So the only reliable benchmark we actually have right now are the assessments that students have to take to get out of high school. So while you're seeing these devastatingly low scores, somehow it rises to 80%, 90% passing rate when they get to the high school. Our graduation rate is increasing exponentially, but if we were going to use the three through eight state assessment as a predictor, we'd all be really seriously quivering in our boots. So that's why it becomes so difficult to say that we're going to use a test that 46% of our students in the middle school opt out as any kind of predictor. So that, that's a big difficulty with the opt-out movement. Now, a place that maybe only has a 5% opt-out can get a little bit, a better read on, you know, where their students are, but this is not a reliable measure for us. And again, you know, we have to use it, we have to report it, but if you look at our regions results, some of our students have to take the regions exams a couple of times, but on average, we're graduating, we just hit the above 80 mark. So 80% of our students do, are capable of passing the
Five.
The ultimate benchmark, five regions exams at the high school level.
So when you say that we have to use this data, do I understand that to mean that we need to use this to make decisions about expenditures or curriculum or teaching staff?
You know, I think that the decision this year for me to share this with you, as it's shared with you every year, but not to repeat the same exact information by building, was a way of starting to move away from making it more important than we think it should be. And while at the same time acknowledging that this is an annual report, that it's statewide information. You know, some districts choose not to, you know, we could get to a place with the four Cs where we're reporting all kinds of data, and that's something not of interest to the board, to share this information this way, but it is very public information.
Yeah, so to Steve's point, no. And by the way, by legislation now, you are not allowed to use those scores until 2019 to look at teachers or students. So they know that the system was so messed up that they, we're not allowed to use these for any evaluative decisions until 2019. But we are responsible for publicly reporting them.
So
But we can't use them to, we can't use them as the sole basis for placement, and we have to use it as one of the measures for academic intervention services, but of course you can't use it as the only measure, but you cannot use these scores in any way to evaluate the teachers. So therefore, makes it difficult to even evaluate the program, so.
And the state really acknowledges that when they send an AIS memo saying that, you know, that we don't need to provide academic intervention services for all students scoring level one and two, that we have to make those local decisions because they recognize that across the state, so many stu, the majority of students are not passing according to the cut score.
So we, the one thing to, to, well, they can't anymore. We used to be able to look at how we were doing compared to the state. And then the test refusal movement started. So just when we're just on the verge of being able to say we're catching up with, you know, we're about average with the state, then the test refusal. And if you look at any of the disaggregated data across the state, it's, it's really mixed. There are, it's mixed within our own district. Violet Avenue has the lowest test refusal rate, but other buildings have, you know, it's just, it's huge percentage swings, the test refusal, even within our own district.
I want to make sure I clarify something. You said that the middle school has the lowest test refusal rate?
Highest, highest.
Okay.
Did I say lowest?
I thought you said lowest.
If I did, I'm sorry.
Violet Avenue has the lowest.
Violet Avenue.
Pardon me, Violet Avenue has the lowest
Refusals.
Refusal rate, okay.
Here's the special education numbers for math, very similar. And then when we get here, this is the statewide for students with disabilities in math. The statewide passing rate was 10.9%, and that was all three eight testing for students with disabilities, and our range is 0 to 7% in Hyde Park. So again, we're below, but the statewide is also very low. Okay. This is the results of all students in grades four and eight for the science exam over a three-year period. Grade four on the left, grade eight on the right. And then we broke that out into special education and general ed. So we'll start with general ed here. And special education here.
You can't read or do math, but they can do science, so just.
How did that compare to what the state, you didn't have the
I don't have state science. I mean, I can get it.
Again, I, I question the credibility of any of this data, given the fact that we don't know what segment of our population declined to take the test.
Right, you can refuse the statewide science test as well.
All of these assessment data is unreliable.
But we, we don't, but what's interesting is when you look at that science slide, we typically have very, the general education one, because these numbers are small, but, you know, when you, if you flip back to either one, I mean, we typically have many of our students take the science test. When the students come in with the refusal letters, it's for ELA in math. So you see our scores for fourth grade ELA, you saw our scores for fourth grade math, and yet those same fourth graders, when they sit and take a science test, they can't read and they can't do math, but they can take a science test. I mean, you know, that's where it becomes really frustrating. And a couple of years ago, we had talked a lot about comparative data, and we were right on the verge, I had started to, I think we were at Netherwood, and I took four different, four or five different school districts that were similar to ours, Dover, Weber Tuck, and we looked at the state, we looked at similar school districts, and then the refusal movement happened, and, and then it became impossible because, you know, Pine Plains, for example, has one of the highest opt-out rates in Dutchess County. So it just, it makes it hard to do some of the comparisons that we had started to do, but, so.
And just to be clear about the percentages, so these, this is the percentages of students achieving three and four on the assessments, but is that the percentage of all of our students or the percentage of the students that took the test achieving three and four?
All of the students who took the test.
It's only, it's only the percentage of the pool that took the test.
If you refuse, it doesn't count against us in terms of the actual score, you know, or passing rate. It just does in terms of participation rate, which is supposed to be at 95%, and we didn't hit that for math in ELA.
What was the participation rate for science?
I'd have to check that.
Yeah, I don't know, but we have, like I said, that most of the students who come in with a test refusal letter, it's for the ELA in math. We have a much higher percentage that sit for the science.
High 40, remembering.
For ma, at the middle school, for math and ELA, it's the 46%, something like that. But science, they take the test.
But I can get the refusal rates from 2016 for you. Okay. So this is our Fountas and Pennell benchmark assessments that we do in reading, and I took this district-wide, and this is the cohort data that I was talking about before. So this is kindergarteners two years ago, first graders the year before last, and then second graders from 2015, 16. So what you can see is that, I know the numbers look like big differences, but it's 64% of benchmark, 62% of benchmark, 61% of benchmark, so it's really only 3%. So again, this is, you know, a very well-accepted assessment to see that kids are reading on grade level, and we have, you know, our second grade group is up to 61% reading on benchmark, which is again, very different from the ELA results that we have. And that's all together, general and special education. And I will say that in the past, the students in special classes with disabilities were not included in the same data, and I included them because I think that's important. So that might explain a few percentage points here.
How much error is there in the Fountas and Pennell? Let me, let me rephrase that. What's the margin of error? So this shows a trend of 3% over
Right, and like I said, many students not included in the last two years that we included in the data for the third year. So for example, students at Netherwood in the A12 classes do the FNP assessments, I included them for 2016. They hadn't been included before.
Oh, so these are
It's a difference, but from now on, we want to make sure that they're included in our data. They're our students, and we want them to be included.
Okay, but the, my point is that this isn't for the same set of students?
This is, this is the same set of students, except for 2015, 2016, there are a handful of students included.
So 2014 is not the same set of students?
Well, it's, it's our kindergarten class
There's a difference in the population.
A slight difference. It's not that many students.
Well, it's a small percent difference, too.
Right.
But would the inclusion of those students possibly account for just for that, that drop alone?
Easily, easily. And the 3% is certainly that kind of margin of error that it's basically similar.
Yeah, I guess it bothers me that the trend looks like it's downward.
It does.
Accentuated by the
The giant chart.
Right.
Yes, but, yeah, but I want to point out that it's only a few percentage points and that we did include more students who, who did not meet benchmark. And then I have the same thing for grades three through five, same years. So these students are now in sixth grade, so these are the, the past three years. And the test does get, I mean, the, the reading material certainly gets harder, so it's important to note that. So although it goes down to 55% in fifth grade, that is, it's a different test. It's harder, but again, we're at, even at 55% for the fifth graders, still well, well above what they, that same group of students did in the ELA. So the ELA is supposed to be measuring reading, this is measuring reading as well.
This says 55% are meeting benchmark?
Right, of all fifth graders.
What, how does that compare, I mean, is that good, bad, or how does that compare?
It's more, I'll say that it's more a It's more, I'll say that it's more aligned with how we used to perform on the ELA prior to the cut scores and the, you know, the regions reform movement. It's about what we acknowledged, like when Greer was talking about being able to compare to statewide results over time, that, that's about where we've been historically. Not in all buildings, but, you know, with, with some difference. So feels more true that we acknowledge that perhaps 45 percent of our students are, might be slightly below, or, you know, something from slightly below to more below.
But the fact that this is a cohort that you've tracked over time means it's the same set of students. I don't quite understand the big jump in difficulty in the test between fourth and fifth.
Not particularly between those grades. So there definitely is a dip, that they didn't make the progress that we would have hoped or expected between fourth and fifth grade.
Okay. Do, is, are your data teams looking at this and trying to?
In their buildings, absolutely. And that's mostly what they're doing, is looking at this data by building, by grade level, and, and what's happening, with lots of different thoughts about that. But in the next steps, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about how we want to close all of these gaps and what our plans are.
Just a quick question, Aviva. Half a century ago, when I was in those cohorts, or just about in those cohorts, there was an accepted standard there that said, you know, in moving from fourth grade to fifth grade, you were introducing a lot more new material than you did in going from third to fourth, because fourth was considered review year. And then the sixth grade was sort of a similar situation with the fifth grade. Because I got involved in an experiment in the archdiocese program at that time, where I entered sixth grade, and three months later, I was promoted to seventh grade, based on my, my achievements at the sixth grade. Same was a review level, he said this guy's going to be just treading water and, you know, full review, and he knows it all. Or did he say he isn't know-it-all? No, I guess he said, you know, but that, they did an experiment like that, which they dropped after two years, but it was what, one grade level. They actually moved students up based on their achievement at the November measurement. So we skipped an entire grade level, all of the last three months, the last three quarters of the sixth grade, the first quarter of the, the seventh grade, and started right up and noted that there was no, you know, the students were successful.
Right.
But, you know, is there similar types of situations today, or they, have they more balanced out the introduction of new material?
We certainly don't have years anymore with Common Core learning standards of a year where we don't expect a lot of learning to take place like that. Those days are gone. There's no, you know, easy year anymore. But with the Fanta's and Pennell assessments, the, one of the primary purposes is for instruction. So what teachers do is they, they get the level from doing the assessment, and that's how the reading groups are formed. So they're really formed based on how that child is reading right now. It's also, shows their independent reading level and their instructional reading level. So a student could be sitting in a third grade classroom, reading at a sixth grade level, and they're given those books to read, rather than having to read third grade books along with the class. So in that sense, they are, you know, the, the reading and writing programs are very independent and student-centered, and this data is really helpful with that. So, right, so 60, you know, 55 percent of fifth graders are on benchmark. Many of them are well above. That's just showing benchmark. So these are, these are some next steps, and it's not even an all-inclusive list, but some of the major things that we're working on that I wanted to share with you. So, you know, although there are some areas where we've seen growth, we know that when we engage students in rigorous and relevant learning, that we'll see results in multiple measures, including the measures that we've talked about tonight and others. So next steps are that we're continuing our work with Generation Ready out of Columbia University. We have one consultant who's been very successful with us, last year working in all four buildings now. And she is focusing, she's in classrooms with teachers, so we're not pulling out teachers with substitutes. She's working in the classroom, you know, modeling lessons, working directly with the teachers, with the students. She's also working with us on the teacher training days, on two of the days. So she's working with two buildings one day, and then two buildings another day with both faculties. And the focus is really on readers' and writers' workshop. So this year, we made the decision that the listening and learning and the ELA modules from Engage New York would be optional resources for elementary teachers. This way, they can focus on best practices in the teaching of reading and writing, and use the support of our consultant to do that. And we also have, you know, many print resources that they use for that as well. And the next piece is about continued support from RSC Task. Ralph R. Smith continues to be designated as a local assist-, local assistance plan school. And Ralph R. Smith is, it houses the five classrooms of 1211 classes for the district, and the LAP is focusing on math this year. So there'll be a lot of support again from the RSC Task. And Kim Niesel is working very closely on professional development and working with the staff there, using, there's LAP funds that you get, federal funds for being a LAP school, and using some of that for math materials. And I'll mention Greg Tang a little further down. In addition, at Ralph R. Smith, there's a huge initiative to support more students in the least restrictive environment. So least restrictive environment, or LRE, is a big focus statewide and district-wide. The State Education Department has a renewed focus. So for example, the percentage of students with disabilities at the elementary level that are in special class in our district is 42 percent, which is definitely considered too high according to the state. And I think we would agree that that's a lot of students to be in special class. So we've already started mainstreaming students at Ralph R. Smith with great early success. We planned co-teaching so that, staffing so that at Smith, students could mainstream and, and still get the support they needed in those classrooms. And there's been some really, some really good experiences already this year on people, kids being successful and teachers feeling comfortable with that. Project Lead the Way is growing. We are planning one additional offering for 2017, 2018. This Thursday, I'll be going to the conference, it's like a one-day conference nearby, and the committee has been meeting regularly. We decided to meet once a month, and there will be, we'd like to do a board presentation down the road a little bit and show you where that's going. We also want to explore, there's a middle school component to the program that we really are interested in exploring as well. And Avid continues to grow. Our first group of Avid students are seniors this year, so you'll be hearing more about that. We are very excited. And we're bringing in Avid staff developers for the first time on a big scale. They're going to be working at Havland and FDR as, in reasonable-sized groups of teachers on the teacher training days. So, so teachers will cycle between different workshops, and they'll, they'll get to see, get to go to the Avid workshops on all of the days. And they're really working on school-wide strategies. So at Avid, those strategies are called WICOR. It stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And it aligns beautifully with the four Cs. In fact, when we were at the Ed Leader 21 Conference recently, many of the participating districts were also Avid districts. So you can see that there's a really nice connection between that work. And, you know, just to broaden that, or to walk over to the implementation of critical thinking rubric, the district leadership team is deeply engaged in critical thinking work this year, and we're making connections between this work and current practices. So I bring up Avid as an example. Certainly, the work at Generation Ready, having kids think critically about their own reading and writing, rather than have more of a scripted kind of lesson experience is a part of that. So teachers will be directly involved with decisions and planning of professional learning for 2017, 2018. The decision was made that as part of the DLT, the Professional Development Committee will be a part of that. So rather than have a separate committee, that's all, it's all part of the same work. And I'm really excited about that. It was a very productive summer for curriculum writing that has another impact on, on what we're working on to improve outcomes for students. And they're, they're all shared documents for teachers, so teacher can go on and just access all of that curriculum as it, as it's completed and put on there. And then through the budget process and attrition, we were able to bring certified math AIS teachers to Havland, replacing some of the math teaching assistants that were there. Again, not laying off an employee, but just making that move. And in the math area, we are bringing Greg Tang back. He's, he was just an incredible math guru. He's going to spend a day at elementary and a day at Havland. The elementary day will be a training day, the Havland day will be at Havland during the school day, because he's an expensive presenter to bring in twice with travel. So we combined the two days with a training day. And again, this list is not even all-inclusive, but it just gives you an idea of some of the breadth and depth of our improvement efforts.
Oh, Aviva?
Yeah.
Given that many of these things are not new, how do we know they're actually working? If we can't have data that's reliable, if we can't mean, how do you justify the expense if, if you can't say that it's doing some good?
Well, actually, we can say that many of these things are doing some good. So I can speak to each one, and if I don't have data yet on that, I'll tell you. So the Generation Ready for Elementary Literacy, we actually did see improvements, especially in the buildings where Linda was working, in the Fanta's and Pennell assessments. So that's an area where we showed and continue to show that those reading scores are improving. As far as RSC Task, when, well, it's free anyway, the, the support from RSC Task, it sort of comes with being a designated school. But when they come, they do, they provide data. So in the past, for example, we have walkthrough data showing higher levels of student engagement from the beginning of the project to the end of the project. So that's just an example, and again, of different kinds of data. It's not always going to show up on a three-through-eight math test. Project Lead the Way is really new. What we know is that students are really engaged, and, and we know what that has done for other districts. So I, I can't say that now we're, you know, we have real results there yet. But it might be more in the way of choices students make, colleges they get into, that kind of data. Avid, we have some really good Avid data, certainly about Avid students and their performance, their grades. They're, we're going to see very soon their acceptances into colleges, you know, well above what would have been expected without Avid. And Avid has some great national data that I've shared with you, and I'll, I can continue to share with you. Critical Thinking Rubric, again, is very new, and this is a year of exploring less direct implementation, but it's a promise, not just of achievement, but I think of, of greater engagement for our students and really being prepared for 21st century work beyond what, what we're currently doing, not just, not just using the old measures, but some measures that may be more meaningful. Curriculum writing, you know, again, there's a lot of new materials out there, they're Common Core-aligned. You know, again, it's how, how that's worked in the past, it is, there are new pieces that are aligned to the Common Core. Math certified teachers, that, you know, again, that's brand new, and, you know, we are hoping to see an improvement there. So, you know, so yes, there, there are some ways of measuring in ways we have.
I'm not saying they don't work. I'm just saying it's hard, it's hard to quantify how much and how well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is. It is. But I think in most cases here, there are ways to measure.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But, so you're saying that, or I, I'm interpreting the same, even with all these, all these improvements and, and assistance coming in, we still, based on that first ELA assessment from the state, have trailed the average throughout the state?
Yeah.
And even when you looked at the, the other data, which you said is a better assessment based on, on where we are, we're still below.
Well, if, if you were talking about like the Fanta's and Pennell, I didn't compare it to, this is just compared to benchmark. So I only was comparing the maps to national. And that, again, like Doug pointed out, it was about the amount of growth.
But, you know, if I'm looking at the data and we're saying, we're, our students are at, 55 percent of our students at benchmark, which is where they should be, that if this is throughout the country true, two questions, either the whole country is screwed up, or the benchmark they're shooting for is so far above what the capabilities of the students are, that needs to be revisited. I mean, if I saw, you know, the average in the state was 85, and it's, you know, and the benchmark, you know, based on 100 for the benchmark, I'd say, well, yeah, we're dealing with students and interests and all the other things that are going on, and that seems reasonable. You know, we don't expect everybody to pass everything unless we make the standard so meaningless that it's a wash. I mean, you want, you want a, a benchmark that represents, you know, I had teachers that told me, and I've said this before, the only two worthless exams I ever take are the ones I get a zero on, because obviously it didn't test anything that it was being taught, or the ones that I got 100 on that didn't provide any measure of how much I absorbed of what was being taught, to give me an idea of where I stood.
I mean, that's why I feel like the, the maps assessments that we looked at, and we also have them for elementary, are a really great measure, because it's showing that, you know, when you talk about student growth, that's our teaching. So our teaching was more effective than the national norm. So that's, that matters to me. We get our kids where we get our kids. It's our job to improve that. So that, to me, is more important than being a district that everyone, 90 percent of your kids are already on benchmark when you get them. Then the job is less important than the job that we have to do. But I would argue that 55 percent is not, you know, we have to keep working. We really want to see more of our kids at benchmark. And I think we can. I don't think, you know, there's anything wrong with our teachers or kids. So I believe that we can do this, and that we, we really need to focus on best practices and focus on a few strategies over time, is part of what the four Cs work is about. It's really sticking with what we know is important for the long haul and not changing programs and changing before we have a chance for anything to work.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Aviva.
Thank you.
That brings us to 6.4, food service charging standards. Greer, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, and I will say, Linda and Lauren are here, and this was definitely our sincere apologies to the family that prompted us to revisit this issue. We discovered very recently that our charging policy was more flexible K through eight. We changed that a number of years ago so that, you know, students have the opportunity, if they don't have their money, they could charge school lunches. What we learned recently, very unfortunately, and again, we were very sorry to learn that somebody came through the high school line, their balance was zero, and they were told they had to take the alternative lunch. That is certainly not a practice that we want to continue. We were very upset and apologetic that this happened. So Linda and Lauren, and Linda all reviewed the policy. It's actually not a policy, it's a practice. We may want to revisit making this a policy. And what we did was we found, we learned that you absolutely have to have a charge policy, and we found the most generous charge policy we could find. And so the new change in practice is that students will be able to charge up to 10 meals, and each time they charge a meal, there will be notification so that the family has plenty of time to hear that their, their balance is low, they need to put money back in, or send their children to school with either a lunch or money. But that we went from the high school to a, not having a, a charge policy at the high school to going up to 10 charges for each student. And I don't know if, Lauren, if you wanted to say anything?
Just I think that our community will be very, should you want me to go?
Yeah, sure.
I just think that our community should be very satisfied with our new program. I think that the amount of time for the 10 charges for the meals and the notices that we're going to give out each week, we're also sending home letters to the parents along with slips that can be handed out at the time of the charge. I think that that will give our community plenty of notice. I don't foresee any issues with the new program that we put in place.
And Lauren, I'd like to thank you and your department for taking this very seriously and, and revising the policy within a week.
Absolutely. It's already in effect.
Okay, already in effect, even better. Great, thank you.
Lauren, before you go, how do they, do their parents get notified by the end of the year to start cleaning up the account?
Well, that's kind of our drive. Well, that's kind of our drive going forward, is on a weekly basis, we're going to review those accounts. And our new system that we put in, when I first started with the district, generates letters automatically pertaining unto a certain amount that we can plug into the software. It'll generate a letter, so we can notify those parents. And of course, any outstanding balances where we foresee maybe some hardships, I personally reach out to those families to see how I can help. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, at this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Sub moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Anybody would like to speak to the board, they can accept it on the mic? Mr. Hughes?
Good evening, Steve Hughes, District Resident. I'm a little bit confused, because we just heard a presentation saying how bad it is that students will opt-out, and yet, one of your board goals you're going to work on is to tell more people how they can opt-out. I might suggest that what you really want to tell the people is just what the testing is all about, and why it's good for the district, and how you use the information. And, oh, by the way, if you still want to opt-out, here's how you do it. But focus on getting them to participate, rather than just saying, "Go ahead and opt-out." Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
Sub moved, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, for your, for your comment. I had assumed that that board goal was going to be what was going to happen when your student opts out, not how you can opt-out, because I don't personally support opt-outs myself. I think we're in a position where we need the data, and our job is to foster the, the participation in the state programs. But given that, when we get to the board goals, we'll, we'll bring that up. Thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment on that?
Yeah, I would like to see the state figure out a persistent and consistent way of giving state assessments, such that it's a useful tool. Over the period of time that I've been paying attention to it, and that's roughly eight or nine years, they changed the test so often that it was unreliable to use it to be able to track progress, because they changed it so frequently, or it was unreliable. I think that, well, I can't put words into the mouth of the people that opt-out, but in general, from what reading I've done, it's an exercise in civil disobedience to try to draw the State Education Department and state legislators' attention to the, the need to fix the system, instead of continuing to expose us to a broken system. I agree that it would be useful to have the information, to be able to better conduct our, our business and address the needs of the students, but my personal opinion is that the state assessment system has been unreliable long enough that if we don't have somebody stand up and protest it, it's never going to get fixed.
Okay, anybody else? Well, then, let's move right into goal setting, and we can talk about it again.
Oh, good.
So, you all have a, oh, it's up there, too. Good. So, as we did the previous meeting, these are what was recorded. And you've had a week, or two weeks even, to consider any changes. Does there any, anybody have any comments on the academic part?
I'm not clear at all on what your first goal is.
Okay.
I would say, in my interpretation, is since the Common Core standards have been changing over the last two years now, we'd like to know what those changes have meant, and how it, how the new changes have been integrated into instructional practice. Is that what the board was?
Well, the standards haven't changed yet. The, the standards haven't changed, yes. The assessments kept changing a little bit, but, so we're implementing the standards. I mean, every teacher has to implement the Common Core standards for their content area. And so, until we get to the end of next year, there, we're not going to implement the, I will say, the state, to your point, Steve, the state, the new commissioner is spending a lot of time gathering input on how to modify the standards in their, in their final review. But right now, we can say that we are implementing the Common Core standards in all content areas, grades K through 12. One of the things that Aviva pointed out in her report is that, in order to ensure that the Common Core standards were being implemented, especially at the elementary level, we mandated that teachers use the modules and the listening and learning, the New York State modules, and they found it too constraining, and took away a lot of their flexibility to design their own lessons. So, we made them optional. The standards aren't optional, but using the prescribed lessons, we eased up on that, because they're, they know how to implement the standards. Certainly, at the, at the secondary level, we're implementing the Common Core standards in every content area, because all of the assessments are based on the standards. So, we really won't be able to give you an update, because we're implementing them every day in every classroom. So, it's a little hard to... I mean, we could give, I don't know.
It seems like a better statement here would be to receive semi-annual updates regarding how Common Core has been integrated into instructional practice. It's too early to see what the Common Core outcomes are. At least that makes sense. But I'm not convinced that it's not too early to even talk about how Common Core's been integrated.
So, receive semi-annual updates regarding how Common Core standards have been integrated?
As a proposal to change that goal, does, is that a more coherent, more coherent goal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least it makes me think about, that's lesson planning, that's observations that are aligned, that's the standards being posted, and, and making sure that's happening. It's a little more clear in that way, that the curriculum is standards aligned, things like that.
But I, I agree, but I, I also think, it's not like this is the first year of Common Core. I mean, what have we learned over the last two years in our implementation? How was, and how has it been integrated into the, I would be, I would want to know, this is Common Core thing, and we're, we're not using the template, but we're using this, how's it working? That's what I want to know.
My impression is, the only way to know that is by having a consistent and equitable testing program, which I feel we haven't had. You know, we, the Common Core standards could have been implemented, but the testing, the evaluations the state has provided in no way clarify how, how that implementation has worked, or how much of that implementation has taken root. And I can, I'm concerned about the fact, you know, the statements we're getting from the, the SED is that 60% of the standards that Greer says we now have implemented in our instruction through the modules are changing again. Now, are we going to, are we wasting a year? Assuming it takes a year for those to get approved and finally get published, are we wasting a year of the teachers' time by following modules that are going to change? If they are capable of interpreting what the changes are, and getting ahead of the curve by introducing those changes on top of the modules to be more consistent with the future holes and a current that we know is going to change?
I mean, I think we could give an implementation on Common Core standards integrated into instructional practice two times a year, and we can use it as an opportunity at the end of the year to tell you how we're going to plan to introduce the changes and the shifts, a lot, and to give you an update as to how we're integrating them, and a little bit, maybe in greater in-depth explanation about why we moved away from total prescription to more teacher autonomy. Because the teachers were telling us the prescriptive mode wasn't working. There wasn't enough time in the day to do the...
There are things that we have learned, then.
Yes. So, but I think if we just change that outcomes to standards, we'll be fine. Aviva can, we can definitely do that.
Would it, would it be fair to say that, I mean, in regards to what you were saying, Dan, about the standardized, the testings, that we don't have the scores? Would that then be what's replacing the Regents exams at the high schools? You know, we're, we're switching over our finals, you know, to a Common Core-based final exam. The state is, you know, phasing out the Regents and stuff, and that, wouldn't that be our measurement? Ultimately, I mean, maybe not right away, because I know we're not, we're not quite, we're not quite there from our kids in the elementary school yet...
Right.
...to be in the high school, but I think that that's the, that's the measurement.
And the students are taking the new Common Core Regents exams, yeah.
Right, they're all eventually switching over to those. So, that would be our standardized testing measurements with, with which to see how our, how the Common Core is affecting our, our teaching.
And hopefully, over time, that's re-aid will be more reliable, for a lot of reasons.
Okay.
Good, so just change the one word, and we can fill you in on the instructional program.
Okay. Any comments on two or three on that slide?
On the first slide? On the first slide?
Yeah, on the first one. Yeah, if we go to the next slide, there's more to talk about there. I believe we, we did get some past data, right, Steve? And Steve plotted it out, and it looked actually very good, and a nice rising trend.
I'm glad you thought so.
And obviously, it's above 75% already, so...
Yeah, the, the data for the last 12 years looked to me like a mountain range with very unpredictable year-to-year change. You know, there were a couple of examples where it changed most of 10%, either up or down, year-to-year. So, I don't know how to state a goal for next year in an absolute number, when the variability year-to-year can be 10%. You know, if we started talking about statistical process control rules, we could say a rule that we wanted to see a trend of seven, seven points above the mean over the next seven years, as, as just an example of one of the statistical ways we could state the goal. I don't want to wait for seven years to see meaningful results. But if this were an industrial process, I would say that we have to tighten up the standard deviation, the predictability of what's going to happen next year, before we can really make a goal.
Do we have an explanation at all as to why the deviation is so, so large?
There's a lot of differences in class. Different classes have different levels of motivation, and you see that all the time. One class is like, lay up here, and the next class along is not so good. It's not that they're...
It's a very complex issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there are other factors that I, I would consider more relevant, I'd like to understand. You know, we've made several changes in the testing of the, of the target. We've made several changes in the material to be presented. I'm not a teacher, but even as an engineer, when they introduce new standards and new, new disciplines, I felt it was important to understand that it would take the, the design groups anywhere from a year to two years to incorporate all of those meaningful changes to, to achieve a, a good goal. I mean, when you had different ways of providing reliability, or different ways of providing testing, you had, you know, you had to be able to understand and try out the different offers to see how it works with your design and with your piece of the puzzle. And, you know, we're talking about 10 years, 12 years?
Of the data?
Yeah.
12 years worth of data here.
I, I would have thought that, and, you know, I've been on the board all this time, so I'm kicking myself in the head, in a sense that, you know, if we haven't reviewed these changes and come up with some meaningful conclusions as to why the jumps, we've been somewhat derelict in duty of saying, hey, you know, these things changed 20%, you know. Did we wind up with a class that was so out of whack with everybody else, that's what happened? Or did we get a test that was so screwed up that you couldn't have expected it to do it, you know? And what kind of, you know, we would have needed that data to make a decision on what we did for the next year. I don't know if we have any of that information, presentations going back 10 years of those. But like you said, Doug, you know, the other, the other obvious fact is, you know, based on these information we got, we have, we have a goal that we've already melt, met. And we're not, we're not encouraging the group to say, well, I can, I can slack off enough to get back to the 75% to make the, to make the board look good. They wanted 75, they got 75.
Yeah, I, I would certainly want it to be above 80, myself. And it may, and it may go down next year. We've seen that the trend does go up and down at the swing. I don't know if we can do a plus or minus thing, or, you know, some kind of, some kind of range, or between, between 79 and 83, or something like that.
I like that. I, I gathered from Steve's comments, we, we don't have a real handle on what is, what should be considered a reasonable statistical variation in the number, that would not be indicative of the fact that the trend is going in the opposite direction as a result of it. I mean, if it dropped from where it is by two, two percentage points, we could attribute that possibly to the cohort we're testing, or to the testing variations that haven't been ironed out. So, I, you know.
We see, we see a three-year trend of an increase.
Right.
Wouldn't we want to just see some increase, no matter what?
I would think so.
I mean, you know, whether it's 10, five, two, one, I mean, with the variation in data, I mean, a simple increase year-to-year would be nice.
If you look back at the 2011, the one that was a really low drop, that was not a surprise to the district of that low graduation rate. Many of the teachers already knew that was coming in, just by the performance of the class coming in. So, we have to look at the other, there is variables that, we, we can have a graduation rate that we're looking for, but we can have reasons why that may have affected it. We could have a target, and then we have to look for the reasons why. That'd mean we didn't fail the goal. We knew these situations have caused this low drop.
Well, based on what you said, that would bother me more, that if everybody knew that was going to happen, and nobody took action to fix that, that would kind of be bothersome.
There was a whole lot of issues with that class.
And once the pre-training is running, it's hard to turn it down.
Well, I, I can say that, starting easily six, seven years ago, we looked at graduation rate at the high school very differently to get to root cause analysis. And one of the things that has now happened in the last few years is we have built that system. So I was just at the high school today where they put up, they're tracking all of the students beginning in ninth grade and being able to identify the minute that student goes off graduation course and what interventions at what grade level. So, at least on our end, we know right now, I mean, there were, there were fifty, there were fifty-seven students who have some graduation issues, you know, twelve of them have this, expert, X number of them have this. And every one of those students are identified and being monitored on a daily, on a weekly basis, if not a daily basis. That is very different than what was done in the past. We also have put in credit recovery, more Regents prep. This is our second year of having a summer school where the district actually finances our own summer school and students get transportation and get to go to summer school. So, a lot of the interventions that we've put into place are knowing student by student starting in ninth grade. I can tell you right now that at the high school now, there's a system in place to know every student that's at risk coming in as a ninth grader, at risk as a tenth grader, and they're tracked and monitored, just having the credit recovery and the summer school. Plus, we've done a lot of work of what are, what are the obstacles? What are the things that we're doing that prevent students from graduating? And there were a handful. So, we have a comprehensive intervention system going on at the high school and I think that's why you see, especially in the last four years, the upward trend, how fast we can continue it. That's to be seen if we're looking at eighty-three. I can tell you right now, they're nervous about maintaining eighty-three. They don't want to go below eighty-three, but they know that one or two students could make a difference. But they do know right now that they could, they, that we can be close to maintaining. The only hidden factor right now, every single student is known, the only hidden factor right now is students exiting and entering mid-year. Even those students, as soon as they come in, they'll be identified as either on the trajectory for graduation or in need of interventions. It is a well-oiled machine. It took three years to build it, but it's in place now. That coupled with interventions in the earlier grades, but at least at the high school level, we now finally have a system that is comprehensive from the moment a student walks in ninth grade. And that is huge. And that has yielded direct and immediate results to say, here are the things that prevent a student from graduation. I mean, not, a student not being able to go to summer school to, to make up a class was a huge impediment to graduation. As of two years ago, if a student, they would just have to retake it in, again in January with no interventions unless it was repeating a class. And what would happen for students who were at risk? If you can't go to summer school or you don't have an after-school credit recovery, and now we have both, we have an after-school credit recovery and a summer school, by the beginning of their junior year, we could have predicted they can't graduate because there aren't enough hours in the day to have the students repeat the classes. So we have an online credit recovery, we have a Regents prep, and we have a full summer school. And just those three things have made a huge difference. But even more than that is the identification of the kids, the adults in the building connecting with the kids, wrapping their arms around them, getting them motivated to go to the after-school programs and the summer programs. So, if, if you could see the systems that are in place and we'll be at Rick Party School in December, I'll ask him to focus on his data and what they've done to improve the graduation rate. And I have to give credit also to Heather Dennis under Aviva's leadership too, because the work that she did coupled with Rick, built on what Barb and I had started to do five, six years ago to uncover the barriers was absolutely amazing. So, hanging in there eighty or above is definitely our goal. Going below eighty, nobody wants to do.
So, the current seniors, have they been four years in this program? Or did this program start two years ago, three years ago?
The inception of, of tracking each individual student-
And the ninth graders thing.
-was three years ago. So these students have had the benefit of two years of being one hundred percent on somebody's docket.
With the capabilities available.
So, two years from now, the graduating class, two years from now, will have the benefit of four years.
Four years.
I think we should have a goal on two years from now as to see whether or not this, this program, a cohort that has had four years of this intervention.
And I think it's important too to, as Jeff said too, is, as we track the data, to look at cohort, cohort data. So, what's the percentage of students with disabilities? What's the percentage of students with free and reduced lunch? So that way, if we get a spike or a double spike, we know that maybe different interventions need to be or those are just other, other data points. I know when we did a root cause analysis when I was in the city of Kingston for an elementary school and we took every piece of data, the passing rate, and that was when we were just doing fourth and eighth grade assessments, the passing rate for students that George Washington, the highest poverty level school, was ninety percent for the students that we had from kindergarten through fourth grade. And if you just took that measure, keep the kids in one place in our school, in that building for those years, the passing rate was ninety percent. But the mobility issues in a city school district create a lot of disruption for students on a myriad of levels, so.
So the data on graduation is always one year behind?
Yes.
Right. So, by 2017, 2018, that's two reports from now, so I don't think-
Well, the official school report card is behind, but we have June's, like, August is not officially published yet, but June 2016 is. So it's available for us to see in the system.
So in your pink booklet, 2016 was 2016?
Correct.
Yes. But it's not the official school report card on the state website.
But you mentioned August, that would be the point at which students that took advantage of the programs for their senior year could still achieve their, their graduation.
We don't have the official, like, it, it could be eighty-one, eighty-two, or eighty-three percent. That's not official solid yet, the August.
But this year, this year is sixteen, seventeen. And seventeen, eighteen is the year after that, so.
Right, I just mean, we do have June 2016 graduation rate.
Eighty-three percent, which it is now, is not unreasonable.
What is the state figure right now? Do we know?
The state graduation rate?
Graduate the, you know, what?
State average?
I'm assuming it's better than ours because we've put in such an effort into recover and get back because we were being pointed out as not meeting it.
No, we're above this.
We're above, yeah.
We're above the state.
We're above the state now.
But there are many, well, not many, but there are districts around us that are much higher.
Much higher.
Much higher. Red hook for another.
You know, would it be reasonable to set a target three years out where we'd like to be in relationship to the other programs around here as achievable and divide that into three, saying we'd like to go from eighty-three to eighty-five, eighty-five to eighty-seven, and eighty-seven to-
Wouldn't it be more logical to say we want to keep this minimum and we have reached targets? That gives the flexibility. I mean, it's what we do at Global Boundaries. We have a target.
You making money?
And we- Yes, we actually are.
Oh, okay.
We're doing good. Better than when we were with IBM. Got some on camera with that one. But we have a target and we know that's what we have to hit. But we have, we want this target and you're going for that target.
Well, the fact that we have detailed information at the high school seems to indicate that we could actually know what the range of possible outcomes could be.
They're crossing their fingers, not crossing their fingers, to say the same or go slightly above, based on the number of students they know that are at risk night, right now. There's, I wish I could pull up Rick's report because he had the specific number of students who are in jeopardy of graduation this year. So they know what they have and they know they need, I think, you know, let's say twenty-one of the fifty-seven students to keep them at where they are now. So if they, if twenty-one of the fifty-seven students are at risk of graduation right now make it, they maintain. If they exceed the twenty-one students, they may surpass the graduation rate of eighty-three or whatever it was this year. And the only variable will be if new students move in that are at risk for graduating and that is always a possibility, so.
I would, I would suggest that it's hard to, it's hard to say we want to, you know, a two percent growth, you know, every year inevitably. I mean, yeah, I mean, of course, that's what we would love, right? We would constantly like to improve. But wouldn't a more reasonable goal be due to the many factors that come into graduation rates, be to maintain graduation rate in hopes of, in hopes of improving? You know, I mean, it's-
I think you need a goal, you know, I think, I'll say it again, it's not this year's graduation rate that we're, this goal is for. This goal is for next year, not this year. Not this, this, this is 2017, 2018. We're now currently in 2016, 2017.
We're talking about the graduation rate for spring of 2017.
Twenty-seventeen.
That's not how it's written.
That's not what it says.
Okay, well, then that lets-
That's what I'm saying.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's not written yet. We have, we have detailed information in front of us that should allow us to make a logical statement about the outcome of this, this school year.
And I think it should be higher than the current one. And if they don't make it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ding them for it. But you have to have a goal that's better than what you currently have.
No, you don't.
Yes, you do.
You've got to have a reasonable goal, something you can reach.
Because you have to have, then you have to, that will encourage them to look at the process to see, well, gee, we did this and we got here. How are we going to get one point higher or two points higher?
If you have an aircraft carrier that weighs fifty tons and you want to turn that thing in the, the radius of fifty feet, I can tell you with no knowledge whatsoever of naval vessels that you're not going to make it.
Yeah, but we're not talking about aircraft carrier or, or a large-
Okay, but my point is, you can set any goal you want.
Something that's finite, that can be figured out. It's not as easy when you're talking about individuals.
And that's exactly my point. But right now, they have information about how well they can do this year. We can't turn this boat too sharply in the span of a year. If we were setting a goal for four or five years from now and knew where the current cohort is, then I would say, sure, let's, let's set it high for where they are now. But we can't set an arbitrary goal without knowing where they are now.
Well, that's what we just said. We know at this year, we've got these numbers. We're not, if we keep this number, 2017, 2018, we're giving them a year to formulate. They'll know what they did this year and then they'll be able to use that data to try and get to the next goal.
Well, that's why I was suggesting that the goal should be to maintain with, with the goal of, of, of an increase, just any increase. I think, and I think we always just want to be, be going forward and going up. I don't think, I think it's difficult to say, you know, we want to see-
And evaluate it every year to see how far you can go up.
You could say maintain enough to two, maintain or increase up to two percent.
Well, we would love more than two percent if we could get it, right?
By 2017 or?
Yeah.
Whose, whose goal is this? Is this a goal that we're setting for the board or is this a goal we're setting for the district?
The district.
Okay, we're setting a goal for the district. But we've seen that the data shows that, that we go up, we go down. It's not, I mean-
It's been less in the last four years? It's been less, but the swing has been less.
It's been less, but it's still been a swing. We haven't, we haven't had, have we had continuous trajectory for the last three years? I don't have it in front of me.
Just, just three.
So we've had-
For the last two years. And a-
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm really questioning what we're trying to do here. I mean, we all know what we want to do.
I think it's, I think it's a-
We want more students to graduate.
Right. But I think it should be a, a long, longer-term goal, not a one-year goal, but a longer goal. And we can test that theory out by, by making the goal for 2017, 2018 and then reassess and see how we did and how, how that, how encouraging a two percent, I'll just use that, increase over the next two years and see if we made it. And see what we, what we did to make it if we did or what we could have done different.
So-
I think a one-year thing, there's too much fluctuation, it's too hard to, to get.
We're saying that there's a system in place, or what I'm hearing is that we've got a system in place where we're, we're monitoring and being able to project-
Right.
-where students are going to be.
Right, but we haven't had four years of data yet.
But we have it every year. We have it so we know where students are going to be come June, right? I mean, we're looking, we're looking, we've got the cohort that's going to graduate in June or projected to graduate in June. We know what the statistics are, we know where they are, we, we know how many students we have trouble with or, or potential aren't going to get to the finish line. Would probably even-
But we don't-
Would our goal be?
Yeah.
Would our goal be to, to look at that process and study that process and review that process? Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for, how do we get to there, not simply the goal? Because quite frankly, sitting here, I don't feel like I have a lot of, you know, it's difficult for me to put my, align my efforts to getting a student to graduation. I mean, I know that in the big picture, that's what it is. But if we're looking at, at a, you know, the goal is to get there, how do we get there? I guess I'm just struggling with putting a number on it because they-
And I don't think we want to set a goal based on the data. I think the data is a tool to get us to the goal. So, you know, if, if the data comes out and says, hey, we're going to graduate seventy-five percent this year, we're not going to set a goal saying seventy-five. We got to say, jeez, our goal is really eighty-five. How do we close that gap? What do we do to address that ten percent that the tool is telling us is we're going to fall short of the goal, right?
Right. But one thing, this current class has only had three years of that, that in, tool, if you want to call it a tool. Next year, that cohort will have, in the 2017, eighteen, they will have a full four years. That cohort will have had the ninth grade intervention and all the things that they're doing now. And then, as a full four-year cohort, we would know how well it was working.
I guess the first thing is, do you want to do consensus that your goal is for seventeen, eighteen, or sixteen, seventeen?
Well, that's what I don't understand because I thought that these were yearly goals.
No, they don't have to be.
So, they don't have to be yearly goals?
I'd like to see a set of, a goal for graduation rate for June of 2017 and another one for June of 2018.
But how do we arbitrarily assign a number to something, us, sitting at this table?
Like, what's your action plan to make it happen?
Yeah, how do we arbitrarily set it, set a number? You know, we're not the ones in charge of- Yeah, how do we arbitrarily set it, set a number? You know, we're not the ones in charge of collecting the data.
High school have, their goal is to graduate more students, period, end of story. Just to see the needle go up every year. That's the goal. Graduate more students. It's very simple.
Are you saying one percent a year?
Their goal is just to graduate more students every year, whether it's one percent or, that's, that's his goal. That's what, that's their, what they're working off. Graduate more students every year.
Denise, I like the word you used, arbitrary. For us to sit here without more data and try to set a goal, a numeric goal, it would be arbitrary.
Let's mention that there's no, I mean, other than if, if you wanna say that your goal is to support interventions for graduation, which you have been doing by supporting the budget, that's the only action. And supporting the high school principal that, you know, your method of support is to support the interventions that we come to you and ask for. That's but you have been doing that, so.
It's totally arbitrary. You have, you have all this data, you got a trend line that you say you got an average about, you know, half a percent a year. I mean, that's, that's not arbitrary. I mean, you could say, I wanna see a half a percent, you know, increase next year. You know, I mean, that's far from arbitrary. I mean, that's using, you know, ten years or whatever of data.
Yeah, we don't wanna go down, you know, it might happen.
No, I mean, and I don't, and no one understands me. I don't want us to just stay the same. You know what I mean? Like, that's not what I mean when I say maintain. I just, I just mean hold ground and, and take steps forward, you know, I mean, increase the graduation rate. I just don't know that we can, we can, we can put a number to that. You know, I mean, we would be thrilled if they come back and say, gosh, you know, we had seven percent increase in graduation, but we'll also be thrilled if they come back and say we had two percent or ten percent or one percent. You know, we just wanna see it go up.
So one question I have is whether the system that you have in place at the high school can look at the current data on the junior class and give a range of possible outcomes for graduation rate for them.
I mean, there, there's definitely gonna be variables that are unexpected, but yes, they can.
Also, I just wanna add, it's less about the number than more about trying to get every single kid to graduate. So that's the focus. So in ninth grade, we have many more chances. They've already failed everything, they can still do it. So now we're thinking about what do they need next? And we have kids serious, you know, having babies, being hospitalized, people in jail, there's a lot of things going on. So, we're working on a lot of fronts and really trying to get every kid, not just to graduate, but to have a plan after they graduate. So, you know, to project going back classes, assuming this many, like, we're hoping that it will be far fewer. You know, so we're working in real time with all the kids, trying to get to a hundred.
So, if this were, forgive me, I spent time in, in statistical process control. And if it were a manufacturing process, then we would have predictions of what the output was gonna be out into some reasonable period of the future. And we would share that with, you know, all of the relevant person, people and then talk about what can go wrong, put in contingency plans. And then set a goal of, of meeting some major percentage of predicted maximum output. And that's a very impersonal way of putting it, but, you know, I, I guess what I would like to do is set a goal of, of saying we graduate ninety percent or, or some, some major percentage of the class that could possibly graduate, given their current, current position, their, their current status.
My, my take on this is, we put a number up that we would like to see. And the people at the high school, maybe even the middle school also, because really, that's where, you know, that needs work as well, say to the board, they come to the board in this next budget process, say, okay, you said you want eighty-five percent graduation rate and we don't think we can do with the resources we have. This is what we need in order to do that. And, and that would push them to explore ways, different ways to increase the, the graduation rate. If you just say, I just wanna, you know, I'm happy with it just going up by half a point, they're not gonna look at new things as much, I don't think.
It's interesting, but the, the information you gave us, Greer, you indicated that they have a number right now of students at risk. And they have a concern that they may not be able to maintain the number they showed for this year. So, it gives a valid concern to them that they say, what was it, twenty-one they're looking at?
Something like that, yeah, they're, they're close.
They're close, they're saying.
They're close and they're very, very helpful.
And I, I have to agree with that because, you know.
Pulling out all the stops. I'm telling you, this conversation isn't gonna slow them down or speed them up. They're pulling out all the stops they possibly can. And I think that they also know that if they come to us and they say, we need to do this other type of intervention, the answer has been yes to every single intervention that they've wanted to, to do. But, so they're on a trajectory of improvement. Whether you put eighty-five or eighty-three or eighty-seven.
Yeah, they're not gonna act any differently.
They're gonna, they're, they are singularly focused on moving forward. That now, I will have to say that that has really crystallized in the last three years under Rick Partey's leadership. He came in with a mission and he has not wavered from that mission. And there was a lot of groundwork laid before he got there, you know, it wasn't like we weren't working on it before he got there. But he took the ball and ran with it. And he's running with it, so.
So it sounds to me like, like the goal has already been set. It's eighty-three percent or better for next year.
Right, right. That, that, I'm telling you, that's their goal right now. I mean, I don't, I, that's their goal as they stated, graduate more students. Here's the number we have right now. Here's what it'll take to, to exceed that number. Here are the students, here's their names. Everybody, single person in the school has the names, they're all divvied up. They all have interventions going on, they all have point people. We know exactly where to put them to get remediation, online credit recovery, extra classes, phone calls home.
But maybe the solution is, they come back and say, you know, I can't increase at this unless you do this and this in seventh and eighth grade. You know, it, maybe it's a multi-building thing.
Oh, we're definitely looking at it from that perspective as well, yeah. Like, what, you know.
And maybe, you know, maybe by setting a goal of, say, eighty-three to eighty-five percent for next year, they'll come back when they come, and when they get eighty-three, and the, the comment may be, well, we could've got to eighty-five if we could've got to students at the eighth grade that were at risk, applied the same tech, techniques and stuff like that to identify students there.
I mean.
But it, but it almost sounds like what it even said was, the ultimate goal is a hundred percent. You wanna get everybody, that almost is like your, your long-term strategy, vision, a hundred percent. The tactical solution that's being taken is, you know, to your analogy, you're not gonna turn the battleship in one, one year. So they're chipping away at it, right? You know, if we can move the needle a percentage point this year to that ultimate goal of a hundred percent, it sounds like that's what they're doing, that's in place, right?
And there are, and, and this isn't about excuse-making, but there's very clear data about free and reduced lunch population and, and the three-eight testing, graduation rate, all of that that line up, where all the little dots are following that line. And, and so we are having to work harder over time to get even the same results and work smarter. So just, it's not just what we do. There's a lot of things going on outside of school that really impact and that we believe we can make a difference, but it isn't just what we do inside during the, the six hours we have the kids.
Our, our poverty rate went from thirty-four percent in two thousand ten to forty-six percent in two thousand sixteen. And, so the.
So it increased by thirty-three percent or so? Thirty to forty.
In my opinion, the poverty rate was what it was. We weren't reporting it. It might have always been forty-six percent, but we were only reporting it as thirty-four percent. I don't, I, I'm not so sure that the poverty rate increased by thirty-three percent. I'm, I think, I think we made a concentrated effort to identify people that met the poverty rate.
To get back to what we've got in front of us.
Free and reduced lunch is a, a good example. We, we made sure everybody knew that they could get that before they maybe, perhaps didn't know. And so they weren't counted as poverty. Once we, once we increased and made people aware of the fact that they, and they said, oh, well, I can take that. Now we have more accurate numbers.
Done anything in the last ten years to.
Oh, we have, yes.
To, to.
Yes.
Where.
So to put a number on it, we're gonna, we're gonna put a goal of it, of, you know, we want our graduation rate to be eighty-three to eighty-five percent. I think that's what we've all kind of agreed on as our goal for this year. Is that, is that, is that what everybody kind of agreed?
Looking at the past history, half of the time, from year to year, the graduation rate goes down and half the time it goes up.
If you look at a four-year average, though, we, we are on a steady climb. If you put together every four years and you average that, we are on a steady climb of about half a percent.
Over the last four years, it went down twice and it went up twice.
Yes, but if you're adding four-year average for the last, what, how far do we go back? Last ten years? You're taking the four-year average and you're plotting those, we are on a, which adds to, changes the variability.
You're talking about a four-year moving average?
Yes.
The four-year moving average currently is sharper than it's been for the prior six years. I agree.
But it's not that big a variability. We're not looking at huge. We're only dealing with five percent over the last, if you're looking at over the averages.
I don't know. The best information we have at the table now is that the high school principal that's
Yes.
closely managing this number that we're talking about is optimistic that he can hit eighty-three.
Yep.
I didn't hear that. Eighty-three might be the August. August is between eighty-one and eighty-three, like, that hasn't been confirmed. So usually we talk about June, which is eighty, eighty-one. So.
Wait, well, what was the two thousand sixteen you just had in your big report?
Eighty.
Eighty-four percent.
Oh, eighty?
It, I talked about August as being possibly as high and we don't have the August report, yeah. So, you, you won't have time to get August by the time you're really reviewing your goals. So, and August is after we've done the summer school intervention. So, that's just, I just need to throw that out there. They're gonna struggle with that, having a June eighty-three.
But we do like.
I'm not saying you can't set it as a goal.
Why don't we just go back to Rick and ask him what, what, what a safe goal is and what an aggressive goal is? And those are our numbers.
And come back and talk this the next meeting.
Yeah.
That gives a chance for administration to get together and really look at that.
And if I had to pick a number now, I would say a safe number would be eighty percent, based on the trend line.
Yep.
That would be safe.
But I would like to set it more aggressively than that.
Right, I don't want a safe number.
Right, exactly, I agree.
Right.
So, can, can we ask Rick for those numbers?
Yeah.
And I think we wanna take full credit for what we're doing to get the students to their goals. So we, we are able to influence through programs we provide the ability for students to achieve a diploma through the August timeframe. I mean, some of these students coming back and saying, I was close, I'm gonna take that, retake the red regions prep course and take that region's exam one more time while they're still basically students under our control. The chances of a student ever coming back and going for a full year the following September, just to pass one grade.
All right, so we're gonna get some data on this and revisit. Let's go to the next slide. Any comment?
I'll be right back.
Any comments on the first two, one and two on those?
Didn't we have a, didn't we discuss a date of our board retreat?
Yeah, yeah, that's later on.
All right.
If we're still awake here.
Well, I can, these are both good from my standpoint.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. Go to next slide. Budget and administration.
I, the only thing on the budget administration, that first sentence concerns me a little because I think we have more knowledge available to make a decision. Create a budget to maintain as many programs as possible. Now, if we start looking at programs and say we want to achieve that goal, we might be willing to jump on the cheaper program, saying, well, I, for the same money, I can get three programs, three of the cheaper programs continuing. Whereas the more effective program might cost, cost the price of the, of the three programs that we continued. So I think we need to be sure that we're talking about the best mix of programs to, to increase the performance of the students rather than just saying programs.
Not so much a number of programs.
As the ones that, the quality of the programs and the, and the effectiveness for the students.
So create a budget to maintain the highest quality programs possible.
Given the tax cap. And to do that, we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to get input, I think, directly to us as we go as to the programs that are deemed to be the most effective.
Right, that runs a little contrary to the second sentence, so. Then you're not really doing it with equity as such, you're doing it due to needs.
Well, what do we mean by equity? What is, what is equity?
In the past, way back when we started, there was like, okay, we cut the, we're gonna cut the.
We're gonna cut athletic programs.
Athletic programs and everybody lines up and does the thing. And then we said, well, you know, maybe we shouldn't be doing that. We should do from each budget item in equity, which is what we have here. If we do a highest quality programs, which I think is a good idea, then we have to change that second sentence, I would think.
I think so too. And everybody knows I've been a strong supporter for fifteen years of athletic programs and other things that expand and provide reasons for the students to be there.
Isn't quality subjective then?
Yeah.
Yeah, why, why are they, why are they exclusive?
To me, somebody might find more quality in one program than.
Well, that was a discussion that always occurred back, back fifteen years ago. Well, you're saying athletics are important, but I believe art is important. I believe music's important. I believe that debate is important, you know, that, that they're, each, each class has their own perspective of what is important to them.
I guess I'm just not understanding why we have to change the second sentence because we've changed the first sentence. When we talk about quality, maintaining quality programs and then we talk about reductions with equity, I think you can do both of those things. You know, you, you were talking about reductions with equity, meaning not, not slashing an entire program.
Yeah, it's going.
But, you know, trying to eliminate, you know, trying to skim the budget on each program instead of eliminating the programs.
All right, suppose we decide.
So I think the second sentence stands.
In order to keep project lead the way, we have to reduce our athletic budget by X amount, which will mean that we'll have no soccer team. Because project lead the way is more important. I'm, I'm not saying we do.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that second sentence says, hey, you can't do that. You gotta do it equitably across the spectrum of what, what we offer our students. So, you know.
I guess that's just not the way I read it.
Well, but you're gonna have that. I mean, you know, and whether, whether it's a, a soccer team or whether it's German, you know, a language, you know, there's going to be.
Yeah, I'm not German.
There are thresholds, yeah, I didn't just pick German without care. You know, there's going to be things that have to be, that are gonna have to be eliminated for better programs.
Right.
And better is, there's, yeah. And better is, there's, yeah, you're right, it's subjective. It's a lot of things. It's, 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 you know, whether they're being attended, whether they're, you know, what the value is gonna be in, in post-graduation. I mean, there's, but, so, yeah, I agree. I don't think we need to change the second line, the second sentence, simply because we're getting away from men, as many, which suggests a greater number, where I'd rather have fewer programs but better quality than. But at the same time, part of that will be a distribution across the board as to the best programs that need coming from each department.
Long as the quality programs.
As many as possible implies a minimum, right?
Well.
As possible, many as possible is a minimum number. If you put in quality, one would argue, well, why don't you get rid of the ones that aren't quality to begin with? Why, I thought all our programs are quality programs.
I have to agree with you on that one. Because it's just like before. It's what to the students, what to the parents, they feel is the most quality for, for their child. And that's a very subjective thing.
So why don't we take out quality and many, just to maintain programs within the school district? I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna pick it apart that much, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, why are, why are we, why are we splitting hairs? I mean, we all know what we want to do, right? We want to, we want to try to have as many programs as we can, give as much to our students as we possibly can, and we want, instead of having to slash each and every one of them.
I think that's what that says.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I mean. I think we're, I think we're.
I think we're fine with it.
I mean, after all, we're the ones that are gonna be working on the budget.
I'm okay if you leave the first sentence the way it is, and the second sentence, and leave it just the way it is, that's fine. But if you change it, then that equity part gives me a problem.
Okay.
Leave it there.
All right.
Move on.
We're relying on your integrity.
This is getting to be like contract negotiations where it's midnight and everybody wants to agree.
We're approaching that now.
I think number two is something we definitely want, right?
Yep.
Let's keep going. Steve has offered to conduct the poll, so that's good. We suggested do it electronically, which I thought was a great idea.
Yeah, yep.
So.
Nice job, Debbie.
Yeah, great.
Who is to establish the, we haven't identified who is responsible for determining or specifying the questions on the exit poll.
I'm gonna take a first, I'm, I'm gonna take a first pass.
All right, that, so we're talking about conducting an, an exit poll, a poll created by the Board of Education.
Correct.
Correct. That's right.
Can I, just as a general thing, I should think that the subcommittees of the board, you know, think of it in terms of some of the subcommittees, if they have anything they want to.
Otherwise, I'm gonna put what I want to see on there.
We come to number two, which we had a comment on in public participation, which I happen to agree with. But I don't think we should be fi, be providing information about the process of test refusal. I think we should be providing information of what happens to my student if I refuse, if I refuse them to take the test.
So I should say that there's already some information posted. I mean, not on behalf of the board, but just because that was an interest, and my understanding was that that was.
Right, but can I go to the website and?
Yeah.
Find it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I pulled it up. So it's in quick links toward the very last item is test refusal information.
Okay.
And the links there are a letter to PTA stakeholders, this is from National PTA, and it's, it's very much encouraging people to have their children sit for the tests. A sample test refusal letter that has in it the.
Fine.
Things that people can refuse.
Take two out, though.
And a Q and A that again supports, says what it is and what tests are about. And that's it. So there's just three links informational, but it can be taken down or changed. There is also a particular letter that goes to a family once, they've already sent a letter saying that their child is planning to refuse the test.
Then I would like to remove number two.
My only concern about doing so is the event that the acceptable practice of test, standardized testing refusal changes. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we're already meeting this. I just don't want to be in the position where we've got a lineup behind the lectern complaining about the fact that we didn't provide accurate information. So as long as we can agree that this is gonna be.
I don't personally feel that that's our job. I don't think we should, to be truthful.
Well, but part of it is.
Our job is to get people to take the test. Our job is for people to invest in our, in our educational system and be part of the program and not, not part of a, you know, a movement. And yes, did it, did it change the comic core? Yes, it did, you know.
What, my concern, I would like to see people take the test.
Right.
Regardless of the fact that I, at times, talk as if I support their position, I would like to see them take it. It would be useful for us, and I agree. However, I think that twisting their arm or doing anything that, that smells like coercion is going to rub them the wrong way and cause, cause a reaction that is not helpful to anybody. So I would just like to see us provide the factual information about how to.
But if it's already on our website, then we don't need this as a goal. It's already accomplished.
But, but at the same time, I think we need as a board to provide information as to what this, at the point that that opt-out has gotten to, how it has created issues for us in terms of interpreting the results of the test for those that did take it, and the availability of information we need to understand the success of what we're doing. I mean, the, I believe that the opt-out program has achieved what was intended to achieve. And to continue, it's now becoming, oh, yeah, we, I didn't take it last year, and what the hell, I'm not gonna take it this year, and my son's not gonna take it next year, and my daughter's not gonna take it the year after that, because it's worthless, and it's not. It's a, it's an important tool that we need information from, to provide, to, we need to work to provide that information for our teachers so they can continue to improve the success within the testing structure and also the end result of graduation.
So, so is a better goal here that prior to the beginning of the New York State testing cycle, we provide information to families about the value of having their students take the test?
Works for me.
Works for me too.
But I would also say that, you know, well, I agree, we have to support the test, and I do support the test. But I think it's also our responsibility to, to be, to provide information to the community about their, their choices and how they can achieve those choices too. Meaning, we have it on the website, and I think that's good. We've got, we finally have some, some structure, you know, and some literature there that tells people how they can opt-out and how to do it properly and well, and work with the district to do that, as opposed to these stands and everybody, you know, having all this different communications and stuff. So I, I liked Steve's idea, what we're saying and what you're saying, Perry. I think it's important, let's start to, let's start to show the value of the tests when we can, what, what they mean to us as a school district and how they're being used. There's a lot of misinformation out there about how these, this data is being used, and I think you're right. If we can educate people about that, then some of that might go away. And then also say, and by the way, we've got this information on the website.
So what are you asking, saying we need to do?
I say educate, talk about how.
As in a, as in a special. As in a special meeting, a presentation, or just what?
We tried that.
We tried that, yeah, that's what I'm saying. What, as, how do you, how do we do that?
Is there, I don't know, is there, is there room for something like that in the newsletter or in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could certainly publish something about the, the purpose and the importance of state assessments. And we, we have, and I'll say that the building principals also do some work at PTA meetings, and so, yeah. But we could certainly publish the importance of state assessments, or put out a position statement and publicize the importance.
And, yeah, and how we use the data, I think that's a good idea.
Or how we could use.
Or how we could.
Well, I would propose using Perry's statement as, in place of what's there in number two.
Works for me.
Fine.
What's Perry's statement?
You want to state it again? Yeah.
Prior to the beginning of the New York State testing cycle, provide information to families of the value of the testing process, or the testing, test results, statistical value of the test results.
Yeah.
To the improvement of the district.
Yeah, I just have to share with you, like, one of Eric Shaw's goals was to apply for blue ribbon status, and he was so excited when their results went, got, they got off the focus list, and he shared with the PTA that he would be able to apply for blue ribbon status once they got off the hit list for scores. And then the refusals kept coming in, and the, we, we will not be able to apply for blue ribbon status of the middle school because you can't apply, because we'll still be on a list because of participation. And the, he reported to me that all the parents were, most of the parents were in agreement, yes, we understand, we'd love to be a blue ribbon school and apply for that, but then on their way out the door, they said, yeah, but my kid's still not taking the test. So, you know, we, we could certainly try, but I know he made a really, we crafted a letter together last year and the year before to really, the letter about testing went home, included information about the value of testing. So we, we have been making serious efforts to inform parents about how we'll use the tests and the value, and what, what benefits the school could possibly do, not to mention your real estate values if we had blue ribbon status.
Well, maybe we should publish the top ten reasons why students should take the test each year. And, and list, you know, those kinds of things, as to, you know, opportunities the district is, is missing, or the difficulty of, of making that, and making use of statistical data by lack of having a broad enough range. But then again, maybe nobody will do anything with it.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, as, looking at the testing process, the reporting process, and what it can be used for, there really, at this point, the only negative is, that I can remember or think about that the people, the parents have pointed to, is the emotional stress on the students for taking the exam. But all those have been removed. You know, the, the exams can't be used for evaluating the students, it can't be used for evaluating the teachers for the next couple of years. So a lot of those emotional stresses have gone away, except for the fact he's taking an exam, you know.
Yeah, they really, they really did try to take all the emotional stresses away to, so maybe we can just pump that up a little bit more.
Yeah.
I, I think that if the state really wanted this data, they would make them mandatory.
And.
Which has been done in other states.
But the fact of the matter is that the movement is at a point where they said, who the hell do you think you are telling me what I gotta do? Well, they're not gonna do it.
In that case, I mean, we can, we can make our, our case that it's valuable. However, I, I can't imagine it really mattering to the people that are protesting the state assessments.
So let's get rid of it.
I'm fine with that.
See, they've already mandated that you have to have at least ninety percent participation. What they haven't said is what the penalty or the consequences of not having that are. And so it becomes a non, a non-issue.
Ninety percent or greater.
Well, so far, they haven't, they haven't taken any action.
They threaten, but they haven't done anything.
Yeah, they haven't done anything, so, I don't know.
So then our goal should be to try and encourage people to take the tests, and the only way to try and encourage them is to tell them how valuable they are. Really? I mean, how else could you do that?
Yeah, yeah, so that's what we're doing.
Yeah, so I like that idea.
You like that, don't you?
You said it.
Should we move on to facilities?
Did we change the second one? Did we remove it?
No, we changed it.
Change it, what we're gonna do. We're gonna emphasize the values of the testing.
Okay, facilities, any comments on those two?
In the presentation, I would really like to see information included as to what has been done to achieve these reductions. I mean, you know, because I continue to hear negatives on some of the things that have been done and the impact on, on our employees and our students.
You're talking about the energy educator?
Yeah.
And the energy savings?
Yeah, yeah, we've done real good, we've got this much done, you know, but. At, at times, there are, there are, there are employees that are working for, for reasons, for reasons that need to be met. They're suddenly finding themselves putting on coats because they can't stay in the building. And it's at that time when the, the building is still occupied by students. So if it's impacting the employees, it's also impacting the students. I'd like to understand, you know, I'd like to understand what they're doing and, you know, what they have done with that. I mean, we had the scenario last year that really galled me when we asked about the, what was going on about certain parts of the system in Roosevelt, and we were told, oh, no, that, it's all working, here's the program. And the program says, turn it on here, turn it off here, turn it on here, turn it off there, and they all seemed reasonable. And two months later, it came back and said, oh, well, it wasn't quite that. Yeah, the program said to do it, but guess what? The linkages between the program and the actual actuators and equipment weren't working, so it didn't quite happen the way we said, the program said it was happening.
But isn't the last sentence here, this should include impact statements from affected shareholders?
Yeah, that's what I put in last year, for the same reason, yeah.
And we did, we reported that at one point.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good the way it is.
Who's gathering that information of impact?
We did last year, and we shared it. We, it was a little spottier than I think we'd like, but we could do it again.
I think it needs to be done every year, because we, there, there's a threshold at which.
Okay.
People get lost, our employees get lost in the, in the.
Right.
So let's just make sure that the, we have a broader range of affected shareholders, or more comprehensive.
I mean, I got into it last year and said, I'm coming to another board meeting, but it's as cold as it was today at this last one.
All right, second one's okay?
Yeah.
Moving on. Policy, review all policies of financial nature by the beginning of January. And we're on target for that, yes, that's true.
All right.
That one looks good.
Yeah, let's save the ones that we know we can meet.
The cheesy ones.
Does, no, but that's a necessary one.
Any, any comments on these three?
Looks good.
I'd be happy with that.
I'd be also happy. And this is not a surrender to the time. We should have done, we should have gone from the bottom up, Doug, we might have.
No, I'm, um, oh, okay. Yes, we should have done from the bottom up, yes, okay. And that's.
Instead of the ad nauseam.
Okay, we're good.
Technology, we said it's okay, all right.
Yep.
Excellent. Now that wasn't so hard, was it?
Hard, painful, yes.
All right. We had, the next item was a timeline for the board retreat, and we found out there was a good date in December, and there was a place open, and Perry had to throw a little monkey wrench and ask if might we meet together with the Red Hook Board, and we're still investigating that to see if we want to have a joint meeting.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I've had more conversation, or this kind of has been evolving. I'm not sure whether they're, it may not be so much that they're asking for a, a common. it may not be so much that they're asking for a common meeting or a shared meeting as much as to have members of their board come for the sake of learning what's available.
They want a sampling?
Offered to contribute to the cost of it?
I think that, yeah, I don't think that they're opposed to, you know, contributing.
I mean, we have set up December 15th as a date and we,
Yeah.
And that's good for us and it's good for NISMIA, right? So.
I know that Debbie's been in, you've been in touch with.
Yeah, they're in.
Yeah, so, you know, I would say play it out. I wouldn't, I don't know that we need to make any changes in our schedule to accommodate anyone else. I think it's a matter of putting it out there and.
That's what it is if they want to come.
Yeah.
So unless things change, we're gonna have it on the 15th. And we'll find a suitable location, perhaps a couple of those again, whatever's available. And if, if in the interim, some of the Red Hook people want to come.
Yeah.
Fine, okay.
Yep.
All right.
It's not gonna be in Vegas?
I was thinking about the calling.
We only do that every other year.
No, because what stays in Vegas, whatever it is, whatever that statement is, whatever happens in Vegas stays there, right.
Maybe we can get Anthony's Pier 9. I mean, that seems, that might be a big enough spot.
More chicken fish?
That brings us to the amended calendar. Does anybody have other questions or comments on the calendar we discussed last time? The changes that we made?
It looks like they're adding.
Okay.
Exactly reflected on the calendar.
All right. Oh, can I have a motion to adopt the amended?
Motion.
Any discussion? Other than hurry up? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That gives us 9.2, the adoption of policies 8635, 8635R, 4526 and 4526R. As noted in the agenda. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the revised Smart School Investment Plan. I know that was a big document. And I think, I think I understood most of it. Any questions on that?
What is revised? What's changed from there?
The, is Rick still here? Rick? I believe it was the distribution of devices.
Yeah, so let me preface this by saying I went to a conference with about 50 or 60 other tech directors from the area. And we discussed smart bonds. It was state representatives from the whole committee and everything. And the faces around the room matched mine, just this is a process that is arduous. So what happens is you submit the smart bond, which we did. We voted on it. Greer went in, submitted to the state. It got kicked back for revisions. We submitted it again, got kicked back for revisions. The third time, the revisions were a little more, it wasn't just add a little clarification here, add a little detail here. It actually involved shifting some money around mainly because they wanted the non-public schools broken out from the public schools. If you go into the classroom technology, you'll see it's broken out now. And also in speaking with the principal at St. Peter's, she wanted to reallocate where some of the money was going to, that she was allotted. So when we went through that, we talked that it just seemed a little more genuine to be upfront and say, this is what it looks like now after we've shifted all those funds around. Okay, but really the content and the intent is really the same, it's just moving dollars.
So Rick, was there a total, a change in the total value?
It did increase a little bit, yes. Because I wanted to make sure we were still able to get what we needed to get in addition to what the private school is looking for.
Okay. In the tech meeting earlier today, you talked about in a little more detail how much work it was gonna be to get this process completed.
Yes.
I don't want to hold you up in getting these documents modified and turned around and resubmitted.
I honestly, yeah.
And so, one thing that I'm wondering about is whether we should give you a range, a price range so that if you need to make changes to meet the requirements of the current state agency reviewing it, we, you'll have the, the, the ability to go ahead and make those changes without bringing it in front of us again.
My own belief, as, as I've gotten out of the third revision, is that any future requests from the state, because it goes through a sequence of offices and at each office, they kick it back to you for the revision on that piece. Everything that seems to be following now should be really just tweaking a few words. So in one sense, they wanted descriptions of the software that would benefit special education students. That's not the kind of change I would bring back to the board because it's really just about substantiating the argument. This felt necessary because it was shuffling money. I don't foresee us shuffling money anymore in this grant application at this point. If I did, I, you know, we would certainly talk about, do we need to come back and do another board approval for that? Because what we did, once this happened, we posted on the website again for 30 days. The piece is still there about, in public comment. You know, we just, we wanted to make sure this was as clean and as transparent as possible. So I really don't see me for coming back again to ask for another approval on this version of the smart bond application.
Okay.
Because just as a reminder, this only encumbers about 1.8 million of the allotted 2.6 million. So we do, we are going to make another application down the road, but there is no deadline with the smart bond money. We don't have a, you know, ticking clock per se. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another question I had, it's a little, it's a lot more specific. On page five, there's a table of the kind of changes that, that we're proposing. Professional services, connections, components, wiring and ports, that kind of thing. It's my understanding that you plan to add an additional hard, hardwired connection per classroom.
Where needed, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we just read it?
So, in the table, next to wiring and ports, you've got a quantity of one at a cost per item of $75,000.
Right. That comes from a quote that we received from Core BTS. They're our Cisco networking consultants. And I essentially asked them, if we know that this many rooms have one network port, what would it cost us to outfit that space? And they came back with that $68,000 price tag. So that one is inclusive of all the stuff that we would need to do that work.
Okay, so my question becomes, it looks like an expensive port for $75,000.
Right.
I suppose the question becomes, aren't they looking for the number of rooms or the number, total number of ports?
Surprisingly, that one wasn't one of the questions for clarification.
Okay.
Yeah. It may come back to be a question for clarification, but at this point, it wasn't. Because in, in this process, we're also sending the attachments with it.
I see.
So this piece with the network connectivity, Mr. Garcia's office is actually involved. Because we were now, we've been issued a state review number. And there's an entire process that goes through with the facilities planning office to get that piece done. So that networking component, that's gonna take a lot longer than a year to accomplish, is my sense. We're gonna be going through a microscope with that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we need to vote on the revisions. I may have a, all in favor for the revised smart schools and that's one.
Yeah, there was a motion.
There was a motion.
We had a motion for this item. And then we had a discussion. All right? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. And I have a motion for the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Oh. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Me? Opposed? Me? Everybody's just come on. That brings us to, oops, not that far. Motion for 11.1, special education placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. A motion for 11.2, this is the acknowledgement of the report and acceptance of the external audit.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We have a motion for 11.3, memorandum of understanding.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We have a motion for 11.4, lead evaluator recertification, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed?
Congratulations, Aviva.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly. One more job. We have a motion for the 11.5, the, the middle school capital heating project change orders.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Well, any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And I have a motion for first consideration of policies 1530, 8133, 8133E and 8211. These all have to do with, well, various things, mom threat, smoking.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on any of those? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And I have a motion for 11.7, first consideration to delete policy 8133R. This is, becomes obsolete since we approved the ones previous.
So moved.
Got a second on that?
Second.
Or any discussion? All in favor? That? Opposed? Thank you. You want to add it here? All right, we need to add one more item. I'll make it 11.8 stipulation for settlement. And you want to, you give them the warning? Give them the warning? Okay.
So the resolution is be it resolved that the stipulation of settlement between the district and CSEA resolving grievance 2016-03-08, which pertains to longevity for part-time employees, is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we modify the agenda to include the resolution that was just presented.
It was modified at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, it's already been modified?
Yeah, at the beginning.
Okay. I retract my motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Everybody? Wow, that brings us back to, we have a motion for public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Would anybody like to address the board? You've waited patiently, so.
One second. Here it is. Hello, my name is Kirsten Horn and I'm an FDR senior. And I wanted to bring to the board's attention today the issue within the combined AP and regular calculus class. In years past, there have been separate AP Calc and regular calc classes. But this year, it was decided to combine them to be taught in the same classroom simultaneously by the same teacher. The curriculums that these classes offer, however, are not the same. And as a student in the course, I and several others are academically suffering because of it. Our teacher has to split the class time between the two curriculums as the pacing and topics covered in the two classes are vastly different. This means that we as students are being given half of our teacher's time and attention every day as she has to jump between the two lessons planned to keep us both on schedule. Furthermore, it creates a lot of anxiety for me and a lot of other regular calculus students as we're being placed in a classroom with AP calculus students who have already covered topics which are new to us and has stopped me, who is normally an avid participant, from asking questions because of the pressure that is felt. This is an opinion held by much of the class and a hindrance to both sides of the classroom. Regular calc students who may need more in-class help and time spent on topics are unable to gain that and despite it being something that should be readily available in a regular math classroom. The AP students are also held back because time must be spent with the regular students on their curriculum as well, meaning that the AP students have less time to cover all the necessary topics at full level before their AP in May, creating an even tighter schedule than is originally created with an AP course. Although our teacher, Mrs. Parker, is exceptional, combining these classes create an unsuccessful learning environment for any of the students involved and adds major negative pressure to the students on both sides. By bringing this to the board, I hope that movements will be made to ensure that this is not a practice continued next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board?
I'm gonna take off my board member hat and be part of the public for Roosevelt Engine Company or the whole fire department. Recently, Elliot took us on a tour through Haveland to give us, you know, all the fires, fire safety tips and where everything is. So I just wanted to say thank you, Elliot, for doing a great job. We appreciated that, so.
Do you see the gun, the gun range?
We did, we didn't see the gun range. We tried. It was sealed.
Okay, anybody else? Have any, want to take their board hat off? All right. We have a motion to close, public participation, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight and I only know of one other instance of this combining classes. When my daughter was in French III, it was also French III and French IV. That appeared to have worked, she passed anyway. It, it's, calculus is hard.
I, I have, my daughter's in that class.
Yeah.
I have to, everything she said is spot on. In fact, we're trying to set up an appointment to see if she could drop to class because from the beginning, we knew it was going to be trouble and
Yeah.
After, after the progress report came out, it's trouble.
I think I got as far as the regular calc class when I was in high school. And, and having the both at the same time does seem like, is there a reason why we did that, Aviva? Do you know?
I kind of came after that decision was made.
Yeah, I know.
But I'll take responsibility for it now. But it's my now, but I wasn't a part of the decision.
I don't know how many students were enrolled in the AP calc.
We may have the answer right here.
It was, Aiden, I'm pretty sure it's like 12 and 12 now or 11 and 11 now.
Okay, we can.
I've had, I've had classes of 11 and 12 kids before that were not combined with anything else. So I don't necessarily understand why that couldn't have been done in this situation as well.
We'll take a look at it.
Well, I think if you're gonna look at it, you should look into whether or not you could maybe entice Mr. Mayor off or back for, you know, the rest of the year or something like that.
The guy wants to retire. But I will look at it because in general, we don't cancel, we have, we'll keep a pretty high, low threshold for AP courses. We let them run with much fewer numbers so that we maintain our AP program. So I'll definitely look into what happened this year and what the numbers are and see if we can do something to remedy.
Well, yeah, I would, I would like to see something.
Done this year.
Done this year.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
But the student was very respectful and requesting, you know, this is an issue we have and can we be sure not to repeat the mistake next year, but.
Yeah, that's.
No, I'm definitely looking for this year. Yeah, no, definitely for this year.
Yeah, perhaps another, somebody.
24 students in a combined class.
A second teacher in the, or, you know, I don't think you're gonna find a teaching assistant that's qualified in calculus, but you're.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Yeah, my daughter graduated last year. My son graduated two years ago. I'm still frustrated at some of the missed opportunities that took place during their careers. And I'm very unhappy to hear about the current situation. So I hope we can shuffle around some resources and help the current year.
I want to make one more comment with that as well. As her mom, I only became aware of it. As her mom, I only became aware of it a few weeks into the class because she didn't necessarily share it. So my feeling is, when a decision like this is made, that I think it's only fair that, that the parent should also be, you know, a letter should go home.
Sure.
And it, it should be shared. So that parents can make that decision, I mean, whether, whether, you know, especially these calculus classes, these kids are choosing those classes, there's certainly going to be some of the more motivated students, that's their senior year, they're looking at college, and they want to have this on their transcript, they want to take that class, and I think that's really important in terms of applying to the colleges. And, you know, if I had gotten that letter, I think, I certainly would have picked up the phone, made a few phone calls, talked to a few people. So it's only really just coming out in the last few weeks. So I would like to suggest that, I don't, I don't know who, who would take that as a to-do, but I think that would be, you know, would be good, so that we wouldn't be in, now, trying to, what do they call, Monday morning quarterback it a little bit later in the, in the semester, so...
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Just a quick question, when you got the original schedule for this, was it identified as a dual class?
I transferred into the class a week into the, started the school year, because I decided that I wanted to add calculus, because I wanted to take a heavier schedule. I believe, Mrs. G. Mateo here, her daughter is also in the class, I believe, and from the calc students I've talked to and the AP calc students I've talked to, it's just that either calculus or AP calculus, no indication that they were happening together until people were sharing their schedules, and we're like, huh, we're in the same room at the same time, taught by the same teacher for two different classes.
It's magic.
Yes.
I think that would, that's unfortunate, that's something we, you know, as a district, we're at fault, that we should have clearly identified where this mix was occurring.
Right. And this gives our, our new organizational head of academics a chance to...
Sorry, I was just looking up the schedules to see how it was written.
Yeah.
So definitely it's on my to-do. It's mine.
Unfortunately, the, the, the path, Superintendent for Instruction left, we've reorganized things, a lot of things have changed and look like some, this slipped through, we...
And, you know, before we, there may be some plausible, I mean, it shouldn't happen, and, and people should be notified, but if it was a scheduling glitch, definitely we, we should have been notifying families. Sometimes too, with late-minute schedule changes, I'm hoping that the, well, I mean, it's great news if more kids want to take calculus and decide after the school year starts, but when we have those thresholds, I'm not sure what, what happened with the scheduling, but we'll definitely get back and definitely, it should always be communicated.
Right.
And just one other thing, I mean, if, if you can't break the class up with two teachers, maybe you can arrange for at least a, another person to be in there part-time, or something like that.
We'll look at all possibilities.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah. My daughter took the French course when we were, the higher level at the same time. It turned out that tech was a benefit for both, because they wound up as extra teachers. They were able to teach the students again.
Okay, as far as I know, there are no other matters deemed necessary for the board? Board subcommittee meetings, the policy meeting, subcommittee met this afternoon, and we talked about school attendance, and absences, and all kinds of good stuff. Did the tech department meet, I know the DLT met, I don't know, but...
Yeah, tech committee met this afternoon, as a matter of fact. Talked about some early statistics about the progress of...
Thank you.
Getting the Chromebooks introduced and training spread around, so it's a, a very optimistic-looking program. Also talked about some communications issues that I think are going to be ironed out pretty quickly, so...
Every...
Duchess County School Board Association, we did have a meeting. Looking for some interesting things that they're working on as a legislative platform. The committee is looking at just having some type of a forum where we can bring in the local legislators and share with them our needs and concerns. We have upcoming, I believe it's, let's see, I'm looking here. Feature, a future meeting will include a pre-K implementation discussion by Hyde Park.
Yeah, I'm doing that.
On November third.
I'll see you there, yes.
So all are welcome.
Good thing, because I don't think Perry was.
For that, and then also in January, there's going to be a meeting to discuss collective bargaining status. It's always an interesting, local, will the school attorneys come in and discuss all the collective bargaining that's going on in the area, and gives you a little sense as to where everybody is and what's being settled for, and sometimes it's some good information, you know, just to see what everybody else is doing, so...
All right, any other committees?
The health committee met, and we'll be going to North Park, so we're going to try to start seeing, get more parents involved into it. We did have a very interesting discussion with Eric about concussions, and you probably will see something coming forward from the health committee to the board on what we'd like to see happen. And DLT meets tomorrow night, so...
At FDR.
At FDR.
Library.
Library.
Yes.
Okay.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday.
What's today, Monday?
Today's Monday.
It's still Monday.
That's right.
Somewhere between Sunday, Tuesday.
Good thing Debbie corrected me there.
All right, upcoming meetings. The next board meeting is here at the administration office, it's on the twenty-seventh of October, seven PM. There's no need for an executive session unless Perry wanted one, no, I guess not. I have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, thank you, we're now adjourned. We're now adjourned.